Calling in.
It was good practice, though.
RMLD Board of Commissioners is now in session February twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty five, being audio recorded, held remotely on Zoom and livestreamed on RCTV. We'll waive the code of conduct. I think everybody's heard it enough. Nobody's participating remotely. Vivek?
We'll call the cab meeting in order.
Okay, there you go. I think we're in session. So we we did invite.
Yes, Chris is on here. RCTV is in here as well.
If you had questions, well, so when you get to the home most of. Chris, Chris can if he if he think about what you do, if you just if it's simple, then he'll. If needed.
Chris?
Okay. Okay. Liaisons, do we have any?
Let me just I'll go first and then Ray. I attended last night the the turn back for the railroad.
Okay.
Where they're going to build an additional track between Woburn Street and Willow Street. It was for the MBK had a public session. Was a hostile crowd, as it should be expected quite truthfully. And I was concerned because actually it does affect the property where I live. So that's why I went. But one of the suggestions they came is they came with the suggestion that maybe that could be built up off of Causeway Street instead of between Willow and and Woburn Street. And that could be up there by Causeway Street, which is where the where the substation is.
RMLD Substation Four.
Yeah, so I don't know. The MBA test said, well, gee, we haven't looked into that. We'll we'll go look at it. And see what they did. They looked at other sites. They discounted him. They said, you know, the site down here was not degrade, was too difficult for the engineer to see anything.
I was surprised. Yeah, I didn't look at it because it was a great starting point.
Right on that. They talked about whether they could just put another crack by the the station. They said, well, that would require the the entire station to be rebuilt, which we don't have the money for. And the money that they have funded for specifically for the purpose of increasing ridership is what this is. This is why this is being done. And the people who live on Vine Street and those people in Hancock Street were all up in there and it affects affects Chanderville and all those properties too. So it was a lot of discussion. Went on to like nine thirty, you know, from seven o'clock to nine thirty. So a lot of discussion. But I do bring it up because they did talk about potentially looking at the site off of Causeway Street, which is where our the substation is. So keep tuned. Yeah.
Um, other liaisons? Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, liaison.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so um, we're going to get to my role as town Charter Committee Member. As a topic, so I'm not going to go into that. As far as the Killam School, there's been no new action other than, yes, they're going to put in as far as the base price of the project, solar panels on top of the school, not doing the parking lot area. So that's undeveloped space. And and that's fine for now. If at some point RMLD wants to develop that space, that's a future question for a future time and another another discussion, but um, that that makes sense in terms of them being an all electric school to put the solar panels on it. I think that's a reasonable investment. And they they did see the payback on that and and but that's not news. That's what I reported out last time. The third thing, but I can't remember what it was. Anyways, whatever the third thing that I was doing, there was nothing happening on it. So no new news.
The one thing that we dropped into the email last night was green communities. Oh, yeah, we met with the town of Reading yesterday on green communities and we've been working. So at the end of the day, I thought that we would need to do a motion to approve. But we can actually do that motion. We can do it at the March meeting.
Okay.
If you want, I can give you guys a quick, you know, just a thirty second update if you ask for the agenda. Otherwise, we can I can send the materials via email and we can discuss it next month. Should probably the right thing to do at this point in time, but I wanted to give you the option.
If there's an advantage to this, if it's a quick motion tonight to just get it, if there's a thing we need to get done, no, I'm. To just do it, I mean.
So what you need to do right now is decide to add the green communities topic to the agenda.
For tonight's agenda, unless there's a problem with that.
If there you said you would send materials, like there's something we should read first.
I'll 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 present this. Let me present like I'll present it and then you can decide if you want to do the motion next month.
Is it this for April Town Meeting, I assume, to be set up? Okay, then it's fine to do it in March, probably.
Yeah.
We do. We do. Yeah, okay. We'll do it in March. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other liaison? I think, do we have a member of the public here? No. Oh, yes, I love having members of the public. Please come, please, if you have something to say, come state your name and address and we just need to have a mic for you. Yeah, thank you.
Pass.
Thank you for having me. My name is Charlie Portopapas. I live on sixteen King Street in Wilmington, Massachusetts. The reason why I'm here is a concern over Carver's pole hits in the manner and the time that it takes to replace those. The pole that I'm talking about specifically is a pole on Dobson Street. I believe it's pole nine. It was recently installed by Verizon and Reading Light came and did the transfer. The pole was originally hit mid twenty twenty three. I had called a couple of times wondering what was going on. The pole was braced, but it was shaky at best. And just a some background, I'm a twenty year lineman. So I'm not just somebody who doesn't know what I'm looking at. So my question is twofold. Why does it take that long to replace that, especially a safety issue? I understand Verizon does the poll sets and Wilmington, that can be touch and go. But also, I understand that insurance will cover that Carver's pole for whoever hit that. What happens to that money? Where does that go? Because I'm sure that claim has been closed long ago. So what happens with that money? Who pays for that? The difference in changing it, having a crew come out, then charging it to that insurance as opposed to waiting a couple of years? Everything has gone up. The labor has gone up since then. Who recovers that money? Does that get passed on to the rate payer? And that faces my question. And and I see a lot of poles that have been braced, that have been hit and that are waiting to get changed. So how many of these are out there? And how come they're not calling a crew out to do that? Yeah, because when I worked for Everso, we used to have a ninety day limit. Everything had to get set and transferred to get that money from the insurance company. So how is that being recouped?
Are you ready? Do you want to take us off the line or are you ready to do this now?
Yeah, so um, did did somebody call you today?
Yes, I wasn't able to talk to them, but we traded voicemail.
Perfect, perfect, perfect. So so two elements. In our territory, we work in cooperation with Verizon. And the poles in Wilmington, the maintenance of those poles are the responsibility of Verizon. They don't have the equipment to do anything over fifty five feet. So anything over fifty five feet, we take the responsibility for. So the transaction you're talking about all goes through Horizon. We handle the poles in most of Reading and North Reading. And so we, again, as an MLP, we are very responsive and we don't like double poles. And you know, right? Whoever has the maintenance responsibility of the pole there, which is in our case for North Reading and Reading, we're also the utility company, so we can transfer everything except for communications. So but in the case of Wilmington, all of the transactions and the costs you're talking about are run through Verizon, not through RMLD. So, okay, so that so and 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 I will state this publicly because it is our intention. We are, we are first, we are persisting to work out a program with Verizon so that that responsibility for all of the poles in our territory would transfer over to RMLD because we actually think and we 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 can be much more responsive in terms of taking care of the issues. So that's our intention. That's the motion we're trying to move. So I think your request is is appropriate and well founded. But the challenge is is that Verizon is the audience for that question rather than us. And I'm not I'm not I'm not trying to push you off. We legitimately push and we work through engines and all the different programs that you you're probably familiar with. But ultimately, we've we we are at the ours. Yeah, we're at the mercy of Verizon in that situation. But we we like, we literally look at those poles. So our safety record was particularly good. We 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 were just awarded, in fact, I didn't put on my DM update, but we just were awarded the ATPA Diamond Level Highest Level for Safety. We take that very seriously. We look at what's happening out from the West Coast, you know, so not just making sure the poles are steady, et cetera, but also tree trimming, I mean, all the different things that you want to intimately well that are required to keep the network safe and reliable. So we do that well, but we and we realize that it's not as good when we're not directly handling it. So that I mean, we can get into more details, but the big picture is we want to make that right. It's just, you know, if it's if it's less than fifty five feet, we're at the mercy of the other party.
So does Reading Light have a a vehicle to say, hit this an emergency pole?
Yes.
We're taking it.
Yes, yes. And so that's why I had the line form and I think he went out. Well, I know he went out to take a look at it today. And I
And it looks great, by the way. They did great work, you know. The power is transferred and, you know, now we're waiting on communication. But so I was just wondering, like I said, who, where does that money go?
Yeah, that money is so that all that stuff is on the Verizon side, but we and and so when we have those kind of issues, we deal with it on our side, but it's the ones that we have the main responsibility.
Right. So you wouldn't build the insurance company also? Because there should be for that Carver's pole, because Reading Light's time, that doesn't seem fair that it would go to the ratepayers.
I'll have to double check on that, but the primary whoever has the operating powers and makes responsibility, the insurance claims go through that entity. So we do. We we move very quickly on the ones on ours. I'll have I can double check and get back to you. And I have I have your contact information also. And I, you know, with the request, I will follow up.
Sure.
But it probably will be till next week. Just make sure I get all that information, but I will. And Charlie, really, we want the feedback and and we really, you know, we've continued to improve and upgrade the quality of the work that the line crews do. And you're if you're a lineman, you understand, like, like our crews, they take responsibility.
No, it looks looks great.
They are proud of the work they do and we we want to keep that running.
Yeah.
And it's also, as you know, right, it's our it's literally advertising. I mean, it doesn't have our sign on it, but hey, that's ready.
Yeah, I mean, I I hate the fact that, you know, I walk my dogs and I look up at the power, you know, like the the look, you know, it's it's part of the.
How could you do that?
Yeah.
So I hope that helps right now. I will get.
No, that's great. And I appreciate your time and and.
Yeah, no, I appreciate for coming. I know. But and and the fact you came, we we like, we take pride in the work. So it's actually helpful to elevate it so that the board hears this as well. So thank you.
Quick question. Is there any way for you guys to contact Verizon on his on their behalf to see if something can be expedited or?
And that's what I gave the so the the line format is actually, I'll see what he so I talked to him earlier this morning. I know he went out to some, but I know he also went through. There's a program that we work. We have a good relationship with Verizon.
Yeah, that's why I was hoping that the relation we have may be better than Charlie calling.
Oh, no, well, no, in terms of well, in terms of Charlie, in terms of where the money, but in terms of getting it addressed sooner rather than later, we'll we'll chase after it. I mean, it's already in process.
Because I did call the the Reading Light number and the control room and the gentleman basically frankly told me that it's my turn to call.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll follow up on that as well.
So I, you know, I I and I did email and went back and talked to some people in customer service and they were just saying, yeah, we've tried to call Verizon and and I know they went out a couple of times and there was a new dig safe, you know, for a long time, it wasn't even dig safe.
Yeah, well, you know, DigSafe has a thirty day window.
Right, yeah, yeah. And so like, but they weren't even marked, like the pole wasn't marked for DigSafe.
We are. We are in the process. There's a there's a concerted effort. So condemned poles, double poles. But, you know, we've got a deep list of work along those lines for our crews to walk through. And and there's a concerted effort literally right now. It has been for the past year and a half, but these two years now, but just, you know, catching those, you know, as you know, right, certain things have priorities. And right now, that's on the priority list. Yeah. So I I appreciate the feedback, Charlie. I will get back.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Please have enjoy a snack. Okay, meet meeting minutes. We have three sets of minutes here. Thank you, Erica. Four, okay.
Read the motion. You ready, Mr. Chair?
Well, do we most I do have a couple of things on. Do we do the motion first?
Yeah, do the motion first. Move the RMLD Board of Commissioners approved September eleventh, two thousand and twenty four, October twenty fifth, twenty twenty eight, two thousand and twenty four, November eleventh, two thousand and twenty four, and January seventh, twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five, open session meeting minutes. I present the recommendation of the General Manager and the Board Secretary.
Second.
So it's a lot of minutes, many minutes. It's almost an hour. I mean, have we have we had a chance to review all four of these? I mean, I know it's usually just kind of okay, because I I looked quickly at the twenty seventh and noticed a couple of little things. Are we ready to vote for them? Yes?
No, I'm ready to vote.
I'm ready to vote. I I'm not going to ask for a quiz whether I read them.
Yeah, 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 it's fine. So let me just.
I I read them thoroughly. I want you to know as the Board Secretary.
Board Secretary.
Okay, just look page page seven of our board book. Okay. Where it has me saying on two thirds of the way down that concerns over the OT were raised by Colter, Commissioner Colter this summer. Well, I did say that that he earlier, but I also said that it was raised by the board, full board over the summer, that we as a board had done it, but that's not in here. So I think it's a big distinction. It wasn't just that one commissioner raised it seven months ago. It was that the whole board did. So I don't know if that's something you want to go back and look at it again or add it here and stipulate that that's what was said.
Repeat that again, please.
Well, it was that that the concerns around this were raised by Commissioner Colter at one point, but also by all of us as a board this past summer. That would be the addition and and also by the full board, also by the board.
You actually are, can you?
Two thirds of the way down.
Two thirds of the way down.
Suggested that concerns around the four tens were raised by Commissioner Colter. Comma, I would say comma, and then by us as a board is what.
Just say NBOC.
And NBOC.
NBOC.
Sure.
I'll accept that as part of the main motion, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to read all, but I do. I appreciate Erica always does a great job on minutes and that you've got four of them in front of us is that's like a full time job.
Once we vote this, it'll be in my email, probably in the next ten minutes.
Thank you, Erica, as usual. So, okay, with that, then, okay, ready for a vote? Okay, then on favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries four with one absolute.
Quick thing while we're talking about minutes. I sit on a few committees. Does Eric have to type every day's listener recording and type all this out? Or does AI jump in and do a lot of this nowadays?
Can you answer?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, um, it depends. We, what's going on right now is normally we'll transcribe by listening and then use ChatGPT to help with that. But I, in my personal experience, ChatGPT, if it misinterprets one thing in the transfer, your whole minutes are off. Content, so everything. So sometimes it actually takes a little longer. We do that because then we have to go back and check the transfer. Like, okay, this is actually what was said or things like that. So it's helpful in some ways and you know, still needs work in others, but we do do that whenever we can, when it's been.
Okay, so thank you for the effort you put in. That sounds like a lot of work.
Okay. Now we're at we are at full the Charter Review Committee. Ray is our representative. Say again, nothing.
So just on the procedural matter, Ray, one of the things the cab wanted to do is include some language recognizing the role of the cab. So what we would like to do here, it's okay, we would like to have a motion from the cab.
Okay.
Make a recommendation to BOC and then you can then take a motion on your, okay?
Let me do an introduction and then I'll invite you to make a motion. And then whatever comes out of that, we can, we can follow that.
That's why.
Because I want to, I want to shape why the motion is framed like it is. It'll help you understand in in shaping yours. So the way I s- thank you. I welcome your input certainly. Let me give an introduction describing why the motion is shaped the way it is. And then I want to work through the questions just so that we have a discussion about them. The the situation right now is it's an all or nothing thing. The the Charter Review Committee isn't interested in editing anything and what we're coming from here, we haven't really, it's it's an all or nothing thing kind of from this side. So so it's the motion is shaped such that there's three verbs in terms of what action I take, either approve, disapprove, or abstain. An action that is anticipated by the Home Rule Charter. But I do want to go through it to show to have a discussion here and and certainly you guys, please participate in that discussion about where some of the issues lay. And lay or lie, I don't know which that is. Anyways, Mary, my wife would tell me instantly which is the correct word. And and while I think a good point might be some hybrid of the language proposed here, I don't think we're ever going to get there. So that's that's the approach I want to take. And that's my introduction. Can I get it? Are you ready? Do you have a comment on that? Or do you want to? Can we get it kind of to the specifics now?
So there's two things we're working on. One is at a higher level, we're trying to work the cab into some of the policies. And we and that's something that Greg's going to be, you know, talking about later. But it also makes sense that you're going to talk about the Home Rule Charter. I think it's fair. This is something that's been tried in the past and maybe has not worked. But it's worth raising given the fact that, you know, more than fifty percent of the revenues for RMLD comes from outside. It's just fair to recognize the role of the the cab in terms of the governance, in terms of the advisory role. So I I can see it coming in two statements, one as a one A and one as a modification of Statement Eight. Okay, so specifically, so so if that's where we want to go, I'm willing to at least make a motion from the cab. I'm sorry, I didn't have time to, you know, distribute it in advance because I I just.
Yeah, I understand. Look, for our group, having that discussion and sharing your perspective is a good thing, and I welcome your your thoughts and how you'd like to see that. But this language, whatever edits we might make to this language, will never probably make it to the.
Fair enough. No, I I I I recognize that's something that.
Right, okay, yeah.
He'll report it.
Yeah, good.
This is something that we can also communicate back channel with the select board.
Sure.
Say say that this is something that should be factored in. So this is back channel that too.
Sure.
Okay. So I'm not that great at wordsmithing these motions, but let me let me try to propose this so that the cab would like to recommend to the BOC that the role of the cab in terms of advising or strategy, programs and rates be included in Statement One A in terms of it could be Statement One.
I think you should, yeah, I I suggest you make your edits to the in the context of what the existing charter language is as opposed to what these.
It doesn't, David won't.
Okay. Okay.
No, I would rather I'd rather just capture his his goal and interest in 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 that because he's not going to get into.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I could support what Ray's saying. I've put my head against the wall three times.
Yeah, yeah. It's why the hairline is kind of further.
At least you have.
Really?
Okay, so 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 in one A, we would talk about the role of the cab. Right?
Yeah.
And and in it, in in it, we would talk about, you know, the role of the cab in terms of advising or, you know, making recommendations to the BOC when rates are being determined. Determined, right? So this is about cap, sorry, this is about operating budget and capital budget.
What is what is the language change that you're proposing? That's that's.
Well, the the cap role in advising and recommendation of rates and capital budgets.
Yeah.
Okay.
So 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 like include include in it's one thing in Statement One and one thing in Statement Eight.
In, yeah, in in Statements Eight and One. So so, yeah.
So so that's 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 a recommendation that the camp. So I so anyone wants to second it?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
I'm adding that.
So that's and so you can, Eric, I can wordsmith it.
Okay.
Email what you wrote. Yeah.
And I agree because RMLD is unique in that we do have mobile cities and and as much as a large percentage of electricity does come from the other cities, it makes sense to to have have more input from that. Normally, it and RMLD, a municipal is one town. So in general, you might not see that. I think one one careful and and the language is good because it does touch on the two main powers. I think one one issue as we think through this is there is really two two different frameworks that are being talked about. One is those rules and regulations and laws which govern RMLD and and what is the governance of RMLD, what's its structure, how's it run, who's in charge? And in Chapter one sixty four and and whatever subchapters that govern that govern how RMLD is structured and run. And then the whole milk charter is how the Reading Town Government government is structured. So it's a it's how government is structured, not how a business is operated. And and those are the two, they're very different in terms of what they are. So when we look at the charter, these aren't laws. This is just structure of the government. And within that structure, there is a section three point five, which says commissioners. And so where that collides is in the government of Reading structuring the commissioners and giving them the authority to oversee RMLD collides with the laws in which RMLD must follow in its operation. So when we that where the divide needs to fall is the structure of the Reading government can't impede on the ability of the General Manager or RMLD to function as an organization. So how do you give power or authority to the commissioners without limiting the power and authority of the General Manager to run the organization? So that gets to be where the the line is and the perception of where that line falls. So if you go back and look at the twenty years of history that of the board, we're down to two five year olds yelling, yes, I can. No, you can't. Yes, I can. No, you can't. So we're down to the point where there really isn't going to be any negotiation. We're either going to change something or we're not going to change something. But I want us to understand a little bit tonight of of kind of what's being asked here, what changes are being asked? How does how does that dividing line between Reading Town Governments and and Vivek, how the cab might fit into that in a governance standpoint versus the the requirements that RMLD must meet under one sixty four as a as a business, as an organization? One sixty four is actually a part, I think, of Title Twenty Two. And Twenty Two is corporations. So under state law, RMLD is considered a corporation. One sixty four is municipal gas and and light companies. So of the many twenty one other different corporation types there are, you know, that state law sees us as as a corporation and therefore separate from town government, except for that oversight responsibility. So, um.
And real quick, Ray, may I ask you, when the thing you have up is is John Coyle's memo from February of?
No, I don't know what I have up.
Oh, sorry. I thought I saw something.
Yeah, I'm I
Just that that those line edits. That is John Coyle's table from his February twenty twenty four. So we've and we've had this well since October. We didn't have it between February and October or September, but we have had it for the last five months. And that's what you're showing us now.
Yeah.
Yep.
And and I'm only using this as a framework. I did. You're right. I did extract it. And these are the these, yeah. So item one, there should be a municipal light board of commissioners consisting of five members elected from three year terms arranged as possible. It's arranged that it's equally distributed roughly across the year. That's sort of a contraction of what one sixty four fifty five describes, describes several options that a municipal might board might be structured. And out of that, various structures that are in the state. And out of that various structures that are in the state law. Reading has chosen five-member board and a three-three-one reelection cycle. So that. Actual law says more than here, but this is this is Reading saying we're going to choose. The five-member board option and therefore that's in there. But it's, I want to just kind of make the an example of this is not precise language coming out of the state law. It's a contraction. It's a it's a. Summary of 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 that. So it's not, even in this. There are not edits to make it precisely like. State law that's accepted that this is a reasonable contraction of it and and gets to the intent of the structure. Item two, municipal light board of commissioners takes out have hold and exercise. To me, that is in two, three for one lawyering where they get three new words for every one they take out. There's probably reasons for it, but it it escapes me.
It's fifteen hundred dollars a word.
Yeah, well, that's there you go. So there's that's made a bonus words. And then. Kind of starting the intent is in it, although there's a reference to mass general laws, chapter sixty-four above, it's kind of. There is a statement inserted about. Other duties fault uh being consistent with mass general laws. I don't think it's a legal requirement that that phrase be there, but nevertheless, it's part of that intent of. Trying to get Reading to be have its charter be consistent with one sixty-four. And I say, again, they are slightly different. Questions on that as they go through this? I do want this to be a discussion if you have have questions as we work through this.
My request is that we're gonna do policies later. So anything that you say here should not compromise the role of the cab. Going forward, that that that's the one, that's the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish.
Right.
And so if it's going to get ignored, it's going to get ignored. So I think we just make sure that the policies cover the role of the cab.
And.
And so would the policy in that context, if the policy is in place. Do policies of RMLD supersede? Anything on this?
The word policy is, it is an interesting choice that you made because there's governance. Which is the town charter. And then there is operation, which is one sixty-four for RMLD. Policy is actually embedded within us, the cab and and the board. And I think in defining policies. Yes, I I think that is a mutual thing, and I think we should both have input on it. It is. It is not the goal of the charter to define policy. But simply in give the authority to the commissioners to set policy. In other words, you're not going to see. The Clean Air Act, you're not going to see clean heat built. Clean heat heating for buildings, you're not going to see other policy statements that relate to. Renewable energy or whatever else in this. This is governance. Who's who's in charge? And that we're given the authority to direct the general manager with policy and then let him execute that as executive director.
And to spin off what and I I I agree with what you're saying. I think Vivek's true spirit here is. What has happened over as far as I'm concerned, again, over ten years on this board, what's happened over the last? Year or so, when we combine the two boards and we share information and work together. I think that gives cab more than it's ever had that I've been on the board. And hearing the voice heard with the group instead of one person from each committee seeing each other's side. So I think we've moved more towards that as policy. But again, you can't change mass general law, you can't change the charter. But I think as long as the voice is heard or input's taken and appreciated, I think. I mean, what Vivek's trying to do is make sure it's in there as writing, so it does count. Instead of just the word of each other saying, hmm, we're going to allow it. So that's where policy does come in, and I think it's more of a policy change as you describe it. But I think by combining the two boards and meeting on the same night, we've achieved more in one year than I watched in nine years before that. And but much better communication and.
Yeah, it's uh it's, yeah, I I agree with you, Dennis, and and just stepping way back, I mean, in terms of process here, the charter. Committee started fifteen months ago and we had an appointee fifteen months ago, and. This is a great conversation and I just wish it was happening a year ago instead of now. Because it's too late, they're not going to change it.
Well, they didn't change.
They weren't going to change it.
Ten years ago, they weren't changing it twenty years.
Hold on a second, but they're they're they wouldn't change your specific thing, but.
They weren't going to change anything no matter what.
Let me finish my thought.
Made no difference.
There, I think there, I what I like where you're going with it in terms of. It would be useful to have our charter defining where the cab does and doesn't and how the cab shall interact. Those would be good things to do. And if we'd been a year ago, I think we could have constructively had some language and maybe could have pushed forward and gotten in there.
Yeah, what I think too.
I would have been in favor of it.
You're looking more of the cab exists because of the twenty-year agreement, not the charters.
Right.
Not the, so we don't even exist in the world of everything else. But the respect of the two boards and the working group, the two boards is where this all works, but we're really non-existent until it becomes the twenty-year agreement. So we are a subset of everything else, and that's how we exist today. But I think. These two boards or this board has grown a lot. By combining the two, and I think that growth should continue. As I mentioned to a few people. I gave my resignation because I need to step down, but I want to see this and I I'm hoping it continues as a group to. Work together and have the input because I've, again, I've learned a lot from everyone over there and everyone here. By working together and being on the same board. So I think it achieves everything that Vivek's saying, because you guys are now listening to the cab. For nine years or eight years anyway. We were just a meeting that showed up and Dave, you said, a lot of them fill yourself and people ran through the motions, but what we said didn't count. And I think the spirit of Vivek and is exactly. You know, making the word heard and that's combining these meetings has done that. And then you guys follow master law, we're part of the twenty-year agreement and we. It all works together. That's just my. Two cents.
The one thing that I want to add is, and it's caveat that I, having lived through the Wilmington pulling out. The many people in Reading believe this is Reading's light department, they can do whatever they want with it. You know, true for this. You know, and that's the one thing this, you know, after I'm gone, I hope this is remembered that this light department is for the great payers. And not for not for the town of Reading.
Pam, did you have a comment earlier?
Um, well, I was just trying to make sure I was clear as Ray was going through this. What the intent of. Us understanding these changes, which it sounds like will not get. Put into the charter, wha- what's the goal of that?
Yeah, well, the goal of that is. I am going to ask for when when the charter votes. To approve, disapprove, or have me abstain abstain from a vote that they will take. I want you to. I want you to answer that question, how should I vote?
Okay.
For you to answer that question, how should I vote? I think you need to understand. The issues of. Having me take one of those choices.
And just to confirm. You had proposed these changes.
These changes had been. These changes were presented to the charter committee through Phil. The the drafting of these was by Coil, whatever the locker room was. And and presented to them as as recommendations and they have rejected them and. But I.
But so we've been, we've. It's the same as we've been through.
Yes, the same discussion we had in the fall.
Nothing has changed, okay.
So. And it's my why it's my opinion that adding the cab or. Providing hybrid language or accepting some or or not others of these would be a better way to handle it. I don't think we're ever going to get there. Right now, it's a yes, you can, no, you can't, and and it will be an up or down sort of vote.
I would only ask that because we're, it's going to be a long meeting.
All right.
Uh, we we go quickly through.
Yeah, well.
Can I just make one point on the on the cab thing? As much as I'm in favor of having it added to the charter at some point, whether I obviously it's not going to be this year, but whenever. We have, you have to be careful because it is the other towns and this is Reading's charter. So Reading charter is saying we need to have members of other towns. The other towns also need to agree that they're going to provide members to the board. So I'm not exactly sure legally the charter. Can do that, right? So. We got to be careful with that. As much as I want it in there and show that we're working together and governance, we got to be a little bit careful of how we how that gets worded.
I totally agree with you. We're not proposing to put it in there, so we probably don't need a legal opinion on that right now.
No, I'm not saying like right now, but I'm just saying like.
No, no, I don't think, because we're talking about being changes, but I do think that when if we ever get to the point where we're at that point of it. They're actually going to accept some changes and and we do that, we got to make sure that that's worded correctly.
Yeah. And it truly comes down to that the board of commissioners. Recognizing the C A B input, which you guys have done a great job doing. And be part of the policies and procedures to help you guys make decisions as well. And then that will cover unofficially on a charter. But again. We bought, we we live in the twenty-year agreement, so we're not going anywhere. And our voice should be heard and like, like I said, I all I can do is the ten years I've been here. There were many years that we were ignored, and I will say that to. Anyone that was involved in the past, and I used to leave every meeting going, why do we come to this? And now I don't do that anymore. And thank you to the board over there that have built this relationship more.
Thank you, Dennis. So let's, yeah.
Yeah, so going quickly, there there are, there there's a couple here which are a little more critical. Item three, crossed out his duties and and just leaving the terms of employment in terms of the board's authority. Over the general manager's contract. His duties were stricken because the duties of the general manager are specifically defined in subchapter. Fifty-six or fifty-six A, in which the general manager shall, and there's like a long list of things that you've got to do, Greg. A long list.
It's a long.
And so it was struck because we don't really then have the ability to take away those duties. I would say I would not want to strike and his duties because we could add them. We could add, maybe you're part of the green community, so you're part of something in town where. Your role as general manager is integral to that topic and we would want to have you involved in a. A state state action or some other action. So we couldn't take away duties that are established at one sixty-four, but we could add some. So. I I would, I would say I wouldn't want his duties and be dropped out necessarily. As as a part of a wholesale change because that still could be, we could add to that. Then the the next two are crossed out in their entirety. And and this gets to the heart of it, and this this is where. And. Phil, the historian, will will know that there was a general manager who was accused of doing bad things and Reading said, well, we want to make sure this doesn't happen again. And they put these two requirements in there, which is that the board will appoint, the point is the word, a accountant and a counsel. And they will report to the general manager for supervision and operation. And the idea was. That somehow by the board appointing this person, we got a our guy in the organizations to. And it wasn't the general manager's guy and and somehow that was protective of the town.
But the general manager is your guy.
But, well.
Because you hired the general manager.
Well, you know, but that's, well, but that's, see, that's now where the conflict is because now. The town charter is trying to. Put in into its charter, the responsibility of staff that the general manager manages. You can see how they crossed over now. There's not assigning the board a power responsibility. It's assigning the board. A person within RMLD under the supervision of the general manager. So that boundary kind of got crossed there. Nevertheless, there is strong feeling within the town charter committee that somehow this has value. And there's thirty-three-year-old litigation, which everyone points to as precedent in terms of where that boundary falls. And that whether someone can appoint to that. And. You know, lawyers will line up on either side of that and and. Tell you which way to go, but that the feeling is on the charter committee that they aren't going to give this up because somehow they feel that gives them power. On the other hand, RMLD's advice and council assert that this kind of change isn't. Isn't allowed because we're putting staff in RMLD that reports to the general manager, and that's the general manager's responsibility. The fact is, we don't do it. This is not what we do. And there's nothing against the charter, the the commissioners from recommending or suggesting or. Offering up someone whom the general manager might consider for the job. But it's ultimately the general manager's responsibility for hiring the accountant and and the RMLD council. And. Uh, I did look up the rule that people have cited a number of times and. You know, there's a reach where maybe there could be some language inserted in the town charter that would give the. Commissioners some authority over that. But I think the better. Goal might be, how can the commissioners get a resource? That they can use to advise them, not someone who would. Be within the organization of RMLD, and I don't know what that language is, and I don't think we'll ever get to a place where we could craft that language. So so those two are are kind of this, where that line, battle line has been drawn. And neither is willing to kind of give up on that perspective. Similarly, item six, the board of commissioners will approve warrants and payment of all bills and payroll. But cross out and shall approve all contracts, where we do approve contracts. What is kind of more at issue is that the contracts have to meet thirty B, which is. A mass requirement for state governments to procure commodities. Well. We don't really procure a lot of commodities. There's a lot of specialized equipment and. The policies and contracts that I've seen approved do seem to go through a competitive bid process.
They do.
So so really. Requiring and they do exempt for power purchases, which, you know, okay. But but nev- but nevertheless, this is kind of imposing a procurement requirement. Which is not imposed in one sixty-four. And and as although from my limited experience on the board, we follow a competitive bid process. There there are things which we we can't bid that way and don't bid that way and and wouldn't bid that way. So. Requiring that they, the board in enforce that requirement is challenged. Although I think we do do a pretty good job. Item and. Am I on track, Phil? Is this? All right, so. Item seven says municipal light board shall employ an auditor appointed at the town of Redditt, appointed by the town of Reading Audit Committee. And this one is interesting. This is crossed out again with the idea that this is under the general manager's responsibility. But once six, the one sixty-four. Fifty-six A, I think, does have a statement. About the auditor. And it is. There is a requirement. All accounts kept. All accounts rendered to or kept in the gas or electric plant of any city shall be subject to the inspection. Of the city auditor or officer having a similar duties. And in towns, they shall be subject to the inspection of the selectmen. So even in one sixty-four. There is a town auditor which oversees the books, and that is what we do.
Well, we, so truth out, that's the presentation that we do each year.
Right, and we do it though, that's my point.
But it's a presentation, not not, it's not the audit function, it's the presentation of the audit results.
The auditor comes in and looks at the, looks at the stuff.
It's not going to make any difference, but just for clarity. That function is the presentation that we give to the town of Reading every year. And we are presenting, in fact, the auditor does the, so you.
He does.
He does the presentation of the audit results. But the auditor, now in our case, the auditor. Is, we we use the same auditor that the town does. But and that's what, this is not so much a presentation that you see there, this is the selection of the auditor. It's 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 a small.
All right, so so again, this is kind of.
It's a small.
Well, it it gets to that line again. Here, state state law says that town auditor will will audit and. And and then this this says something similar, not exactly the same.
Right, so when I was on the deck, I had recommended this, that this not be changed.
Correct.
Because I think it's good governance that we have, we use the town auditor.
Yeah.
Is there another?
And you have the town auditor.
Is that it?
Just a little bit more.
All right. So. Again, I I if. Well, I might wordsmith it, I I would not drop that paragraph if we were able to get into the back and forth. And then finally. Municipal Light Board of Commissioners shall annual and annual versus. Calendar year. Capital Improvement Program was switched to capital budget, a little bit of semantics there, but. There, the lawyer lost a word, we gave up three and he only gained. there, the lawyer lost a word. We gave up three and he only gained two. So we saved a little money there.
Been a lot, a lot of money has been spent on.
Yeah.
So, um. Rate pair money.
But, and then, and then some change in terms of how the, um, we communicate back to the towns. And I think this is where Vivek is saying that, you know, how, how should we communicate with the towns? This language was changed, that is the general manager, but we're talking about political body, body, reporting back to political bodies. It seems like that is a suitable job for the cab or for the commissioners to report back to their towns on, on capital projects and finance. That that's certainly not a requirement under, anything under one sixty-four, that reporting back. So that is by no means a requirement of one sixty-four, that that, those, these changes be made in anyways. So, so you can see, um, so Vivek, if you had.
My main point was there should just be the recognition that the cab exists, right?
Yeah.
And that, that's it.
Yeah. And I, and like I said, I appreciate you saying, and I thought, but when you start talking about the law and, and everything, we don't exist until the twenty year agreement.
Right.
But then it becomes the general manager and the board of commissioners that have to feel that we exist so that our input matters. And I don't, so I can understand why the charter can't be changed. Or it'd be difficult to change the charter to admit it, especially where we're out of town, three or four of us. But, um, I, I think the policies, procedure and the twenty year agreement, the next time it's signed, should be adamantly put in there what the cab's role is, because I truly believe that it was a courtesy, not a committee. And Phil's been on it long enough to, to see that. And I think everything you are saying makes all the sense in the world to show that. I mean, Wilmington's, I think, thirty, forty percent of the business or fifty percent, sixty, sixty percent of the business. But that doesn't mean we can govern what Reading does. It just means that, you know, we're fortunate to have like nice rates and reliable energy and zero carbon, low carbon.
Increasingly. I want to, that, that's, that goes through the list, mate, Ray.
It goes through the list. So I, I, I think, and let's throw the questions. You can see where there are some places where there edits which may be over edit the text and you might see where the town would say, I don't want all of those edits going forward. On the other hand, you can see where there are strongly held beliefs in this text. And a, a middle ground is not being sought.
So thank, thank you. I, I would say thank you very much. That was an excellent presentation. I just wish we'd had it a year ago. Because I think that's when we had, the memo was existed a year ago. Would have been a great conversation to have. We could have heard from the cab. Maybe we could, could have gotten a piece of cab language. We could have put it forward in April, May, June. And, and we could have had, maybe there's a piece of this, but it didn't happen.
So in defense.
Yeah.
I have to defend myself here.
I'm not, I'm not.
You're attacking.
I'm not saying anything about you.
You are attacking. Let's be honest.
I'm saying that we didn't know anything about.
We're attacking. You have attacked me on this at least three or four times.
A little out of order.
I am not on order.
Go have your, say your piece.
I basically had nothing to bring back. You see all these changes, they all got rejected. What do you want me to bring back?
No, it's just the fact that.
Nothing's changed.
No, Phil, it's that they were, they were put forwarded. We had the, the, the thing that Ray has gone through so nicely.
If I did changes, I would have brought them back, but there were no changes.
Right. But these proposed changes were, were commissioned by Greg and existed in February. No, no, before you do, I think, before you call the question, there was a meeting and I just want to, there was a statement made about whether this is legal or not. And there is a, there, first of all, there's a new opinion from the town attorney, which we don't have. And there was a comment made by her at the beginning of the charter committee meeting, which is public. And I will now play what, what she said, because there, there's a, the, the referee of this is not me or Greg or Chris or John Foyle or Ivorya Freed even. It's the Attorney General's Office on whether these things are legal or appropriate. There's a person called Kelly Dun- Dunigan, who's the Assistant Attorney General in charge of the municipal law unit. Uh, Kelly Gunnigan, uh, she's the Director of the Municipal Law Unit at the AG's office. And Ivorya Freed had a conversation, and this is what Ivorya Freed recounted. What you're going to hear is Chris Haley introducing Ivorya Freed referring to Kelly of the A G O's office, the Director of the Municipal Unit. That's Chris Haley.
Kelly Gunnigan and she said that she's not being able to give us an official opinion, but she's going to look at it. So I'm, I sent her the charter. She's still reviewing it. But she did say sort of like informally, we've looked at this at least three times now and have decided each time that the provisions of the charter are consistent with state law. And so it would likely take a lot for her office to reach an alternative conclusion. It doesn't mean they won't, but you know, she said, you know, absent anything significant, it's unlikely that their, their decision will change.
So the reference to three is.
Hopefully we'll get more feedback from her and her office, but as of right now, we're, we're still waiting.
That is the extent of what, so that is the only word we have from the Attorney General's Office. They were asked again for the fourth time in response.
Third time.
Third, like she said, three, three times already.
Two thousand and three, two thousand and fourteen and twenty twenty-five.
Right.
And the, the math is about every ten years. In other words, every time we go through this, we ask the same question.
Right.
And, and as I said at the beginning, in part, these are not two state laws fighting each other. One is governance.
Right.
And one is law governing a business.
Correct. The distinction is when, when the assertion is made that this conflicts with state law or, or is in conflict with state law is, is not quite the right framing as explained. If, if that quotation is correct, it's that there, it's, it's not inconsistent with state law. The charter and language that they both can coexist. But we don't have the, that's, I'm just quoting the town attorney quoting the Director of the Municipal Law Unit of the A G O's.
And it is that opinion which supports the position that the town charter members are taking.
Yeah.
In terms of not changing things. And since they feel like adopting these changes would take away something from them, they're not willing to do that if the Attorney General's Office says it's not inconsistent. So you can see where they're coming from, which is a point I really do want to make.
So I think we should frame the motion as pick, pick which of those, when you, you do want to read it as approved, disapproved or abstained? And then read the motion with one of those words. I, I would suggest either approve or disapprove, and then we can vote on whichever of those formulations.
Well, I'd like to read, so I'd like feedback in terms of which that is. It's not my choice.
Well, why don't you start with the.
I, I would like to hear your recommendation.
All right. My recommendation would be disapprove of the language in the charter. Because I think it sets us up for the false understanding that somehow we have gained power, which we do not. I think the charter language needs to change. I don't think it necessarily needs to change in all the ways that was presented. But we're not really given the opportunity to change it. I mean, in, in an all or nothing scenario, we aren't allowed to optimize it. So I think there are some things like the audit, like not approving contracts at the minimum, that, that I I, I would like to see the charter retain. On the other hand, thinking that somehow we have power over the the accountant or in-house counsel, I, I think that is misplaced. And, and I think there needs to be language which supports the commission and the cab in, in getting a resource, getting somebody who could advise us uh, on an issue that supports us, not limits the general manager. And I'm not sure the framing of that. But I don't think this language does that, and I don't think we're going to get an opportunity to do that. So.
Do you want to read your motion as with disapprove? Read your motion with that we.
Let me just add one more thing. Why disapprove as opposed to the other? Approve would say I buy into
No change.
Risk and abstain doesn't really kind of get strong enough to the fact that we, we, there's that it's okay. So that's, that's what.
You wanted to read it or?
Read it. While I read it.
Sure. Why don't you read your motion? We'll second it and then we can have a last round of comments. And then we've been on this for a long time. We have.
Well, it was going to take some time, which is why we had other issues before. Now, the Reading Town Charter Committee is likely to move to uh, approve section three point five municipal light board of commissioners without changes to the current text. If this occurs, the municipal board of commissioners directs its representative on the town charter committee to disapprove uh, from, um, from such a vote.
Just, disapprove such a vote.
Disapprove, uh, from such a vote.
I'll second that.
Okay. So what? Any further discussion?
So my, my one concern was saying disapprove and, and taking a position of, of flatly not approving is based on this conversation that we just had and, and going through all these details. We don't have a final version of changes that we all agree we would like to see. If we had that, you know, the cab input that we agree is, is appropriate and, and legal. If we have what you say we should keep, if we have what we say we should delete. And we all felt confident that and we presented that forward to them aligned and they said no, then to me I would, I would disapprove. But we haven't, we didn't do that. So.
Yeah.
You know, that, that process didn't happen. I'm, I'm not judging why or why not. Just, you know, it's clear they weren't going to want to change it anyway, but my perspective would be either approved because we did not present an aligned set of changes or abstain because we didn't essentially finish our piece of the process by giving them our approved.
I, I hear where you're coming from. And, and if, I, I think Phil will understand, if, if there was an interest in the other side for engaging in a discussion, then, then maybe you know, proposing some modified text would have been the way to go. But I was hoping to even have a discussion with them about even some minor changes and, and Phil knows even the some small changes were, were going to be accepted. So, you know, it, it really is an up and down sort of thing.
I would like to just kind of seconding what Pam said. That all we've done is this up or down on John Foyle and the removal of board powers and centering them in the general manager citing chapter one sixty-four. When I think with a year of, of process, we could have, we could have looked at some of those, as you say, Ray. We could have looked at some cab stuff and maybe there would have been some other things other than these two things. Like how do we interact with, you know, like Greg does a lot of good stuff with the towns. Should, is he formally, is he, does he have a formal role in helping towns with buildings? So it could have been other ways we could have taken it. We could have mentioned the climate law. What are we going to do under that? So, but like Pam said, we never did that. And so, and, and to only say up or down on this, I think is the wrong framing. Like we should have had a process. We probably could have come up with some things we could have agreed on. But we didn't. And because we didn't, I have to say that I will, I, I can only say, no, I'm not, I, I don't, I don't, I don't disapprove because we didn't put something forward. That doesn't mean you're not right about.
Would you prefer a different verb?
No, you can put the verb in. You've made the motion and it's been seconded. So now, but I'll put a, and out of no disrespect to either you or Phil, I will vote against it because I would have wanted to have the process. And I think we would have probably had pieces of this, pieces of cab and pieces of other things that might have gone in.
If, if you're going to dis, going to vote against the word disapprove, would you not, would you vote for the word abstain?
Well, we already have a motion on the floor, right? So we have.
Well, I, the motion, there's going to be an amendment to the motion.
I mean, sure.
It asked me to pick a word. I picked a word and now you're.
I'm sorry. You're, you're right. It's fine. Do you want to reword it as abstain and?
If, if, I, I would rather present the, the view of the board than than, than not. And if the board wants to abstain, that, that we did not, they were, did not invite us into engage in a process.
Plus, I don't think that's way true.
It did not happen.
We could, we could have as a board done something, right?
I, I don't know. I don't know if that's true.
What I hear is that regardless of whether we did it or not, I agree, we, we, we could have done it, but would they have even listened?
No, they would, they would not listen.
That is, I don't, I don't think that's true because they were asking, what, what are you, what does your board want us to do is what the members were saying in the last meeting. What is your board suggesting? And, and we didn't have an answer for that. Because the board never had a process that voted on anything. So.
This, I, I respect, we disagree with that, Mr. Chair.
When did our board?
Right. That's not the question. We're, we're deviating, we're deviating from the motion.
We're getting away from.
And, and given we're one member short, I would rather have a four oh vote than, than a three one.
Okay.
So I revised the motion as follows. The Reading Town Charter Committee is likely to move to approve the section three point five municipal light board of commissioners without changes to the current text. If this occurs, municipal board of commissioners directs its representative on the town charter committee to abstain from such a vote.
Yeah. I will accept that as part of the second.
I will also accept that and I'll, I think I also, any discussion, I think I'm, I'm, I probably will, I will vote for that.
We have a second?
Yeah. I, I check, I accepted as part of the second.
Okay.
As, so it's fine, it's now part of the main motion.
That's fine.
All right. Then we've all, further discussion?
All in favor? Okay. Motion carries for, thank you very much, Ray. That was a great summary. Okay. Now the, the real action of the night. Sorry, Megan, for, I could have, uh, had dinner or a nap or something.
Oh, it's fascinating discussion.
Uh, I wouldn't go that far.
Hopefully this discussion is go a little faster. So there, we've put a lot of stuff in the slides. I'm not going to go over every single line, but just want to kind of walk through.
All right. It's a take a second.
So, um, the board approved our twenty twenty-five budget last fall. And then based on that, we do have to change the rates for twenty twenty-five. That's what we're doing now. And before I explain what we're proposing here, I want to reemphasize that we are in the process of doing a cost of service study for, for the, for the, for the, sort of the, as the foundation for our, um, base distribution rate design. And, um, so next year when we meet about twenty twenty-six rates, we'll be presenting something pretty, probably different. But for twenty twenty-five rate changes, we are using the consistent, the same kind of methodology that we've been using, I think, since two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen. So, um, so maybe most of you already know how that is done. So I'm not going to go into a whole lot of details. And this slide is really just talking about too many things. The first two sections are really just the policy and the goal, uh, context of setting grades. One is our own mission. So I have to balance the three components of our mission with reliability, low cost and on the obligation to meet the non-carbon target. Yes.
So Megan, you said that the budget was set in late fall.
Yeah.
Right? And, and, and this is, this is the procedure we have, right? I mean, normally in a business, you set your revenue goals. You know your expenses and you set your revenue goals based on rates or whatever parameters you have. Rates here determine our revenues, right?
Sure.
So we set the budget in fall, a late fall. And we are adjusting the rates six months ahead later. So my question is that, you know, we made a budget, it had revenue projections. And what, so how do, so the rates that you're going to present, I'm, I'm just telegraphing the question upfront so that, you know, at the end of the day, you want to make sure you have enough revenue to cover costs, right? I mean, that, that's what we want to make sure.
Pretty much.
So how different are the rates from what was considered at the time that the budgets were made? And what are the implications of such rates on the revenue plan? And you know, I'm sure you've dealt with it, but you know, if, if this requires any changes in expenses, you know, in operations. So I just want to frame it in terms of looking at it as a revenue issue and making sure there's enough money in the operations. So, so I'm sure you'll answer it, but I, I, I wanted to frame it that way.
Yeah. Thank you. You're, you're, you can make the presentation. Uh, yes, the budget that you approved is basically the revenue requirement. That's the foundation for our rates that we're proposing here. Yeah.
So are the numbers much different from what was?
No, not a lot. We literally look at this together, this opposite number because it's a picture. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, just remind me what we approved last in November.
In November.
Yes. What, what percentage changed?
Well, percentage is a relative term, right? But if we're talking, so we want to get to that first.
I mean, I understand all the other slides, like the fronts of, we've been through the other content. So I'm just trying to hit the punchline.
Yes. So for the, the budget that you approved Yes, so for the, the budget that you approved for the, uh, base part, uh, the budget was forty-five point three million.
Yeah, so the answer to your question, budget to budget was five point four percent.
Okay. And, and what do you?
Proposing to collect for the base is forty-four point six. That's very close.
She's, she's asking percentages.
Yeah.
So it's five point four and five point four.
Okay.
In, in terms of base. Now, the total is, so, um, power supply is variable, this, this will come out in the discussion she brings. Power supply is adjusted every month.
Yeah.
So the total average is six, six point three percent, but that includes a piece. But the key thing that, that Vivek's asking about is revenue, which is the base budget. Which as Megan just mentioned, is roughly about forty-five million dollars. That's consistent. It's within several hundred thousand dollars between what we proposed and what we budgeted and what we proposed.
Yeah, that's more of a fixed cost than the power supply, because power supply changes every day.
Right, yeah.
So that's basically the max.
Okay. So, okay, so does that mean I don't need to talk about this slide anymore?
Well, not just, you should. Yeah, I think we're good.
All right, yeah. Um, so the other piece of the policy context, the second one is, um, there's changes at the federal level, but at the state level, at least for this year. The, the climate target is not changing, so that's also the co, big context for that plus. That's the third and the fourth, um, sections are really about, like, you know, the third one is really about the power supply cost and the budget and the rates that we collect. It's, it's, it has been volatile and it's, it will continue to be volatile. So we, we did build cushions and we have contingencies around it. So we, we're in a good spot in terms of, you know, collecting the revenue for that piece. And also we make adjustment every single month. Um, so, so that, that, that's, that's how we are kind of addressing this kind of volatility of that piece. And the last part is, you know, all these major investments are the main driver for our best distribution rate increases of, of, because of these investments. Um, next. Oh, the next one. Next one, you've seen this, um, oh, well, showing up. Okay, you've seen this many times. So this is like specifically how we set rates and then what you can see, uh, on the chart, you know, the, the, the four items in that little box, those are all power supply cost, budget and rates. And the operating costs and the other like, uh, contribution we make to the towns, they are part of the base, uh, rates. I'm gonna move on to the next one. This is just like the, sort of the conclusion of all the rates that we changed and then, you know, I'll go to the chart first. Just in general, I think you already know this, most, um, OP's prices rates are lower than the three big companies in the state. And it's the same for reading, um, municipal line.
The question on this, on the chart on the right hand side, is that from January? Is that an annual average? What, what's, where's that data from?
That's the current ra, the rates, that, that, so the, for reading the RLD, that's our proposed rate.
Okay.
And then for those three companies, those are their current rates.
Yeah.
And they tend to change every six months.
Megan, these guys are lower.
Pardon me? Yeah, you are.
Oh, we're not saying we're lower than you.
Our capital budgets, like, this year is like twelve million up. So, forty, forty million for capital improvements. That forty million's capital improvements, right?
Um, what else do I wanna say here? Yeah, that's, that's pretty much it, like, you know, the monthly increase, we already talked about that and now I'll look at the next one. I think maybe residential rate is uh, people care about that more and people react to that more. So here's the, sort of the breakdown of the different items on the, on the bill. And then the first three, so that these are colored kind of boxes, the first three are related to the, you know, distribution, the base, base part of the rates. And then the next three colored are the, um, power supply rates. And then the last one is the discount for early payment. So I don't know if you have any question, I'm sure you've seen this a lot, um. So if you look at the kind of notes on the right side, where we say base cost, you know, where, um, the proposed rates are about five point five percent. Um, so that's likely to happen if there's no major change to our, to the actual kilowatt hour sales against our forecast. Right now, we're forecasting six hundred fifty thousand megawatt hours. So that's gonna be at a level if no major changes. And then for the power supply side, even though the percentage is higher, but like I said, it's gonna be adjusted every single month. And, and it, it will, it can go up and down. And, you know, last year, I think actually was lower.
It was lower.
Yeah.
It was more mild, yeah, particularly in the fall.
And this, this year was particularly cold.
Yeah, the first two months have, have been cold. We don't know about summer yet, so.
Weather dependent.
So, so, sorry, um, I, I, I ask you a question. Um, I, I, you know, I see on the chart, right, that we're, we're predicting a fuel cost, right, increase of three point nine percent? Right? And, and, and that's based on, on, on what projection? You know, especially on, um, you know, I, I, I think potentially fuel costs could go down. You know, o, over the next course of the next year, you know, so, so where, where is the fuel increase coming from?
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, Bob, that's, that's basically the current projection. So we took a snapshot as of, uh, two weeks ago, a forward price curve. Forward price curve is up significantly, um, for the year twenty twenty-five. I think your, your, your suggestion, which, um, we want, which we are hopeful for, is that after we get through this cold snap, the forward price curve will drop down. Um, but that basically is, is the mid-February forward price curve that's driving those numbers. And as Megan mentioned, we adjust these, um, each month because they are intended to be passed through. Again, there's no, we don't, RMLD does not mark up fuel, um, transmission or capacity.
And also
Cor, correct.
Consideration is just like we, we don't know the exact kilowatt hour sales. So that's almost like the cushion we built. And another element to it, you all know, I think we, we briefed you that the transmission costs increased twenty percent this year. We did not increase twenty percent of the PC PPC charge. So it's a little bit of a kind of allocation of that costing. All right, I'm gonna move to the next one.
Yep.
Uh, this is just another sort of summary of all these major rate classes and what the current, you know, what's the proposed, um, kind of a bill impact? Um, based on sort of the average or median usage of kilowatt hours, the percentage change. I don't know if you have any questions, but it's pretty, yeah.
The only thing is, I, I, I checked with Greg also was in terms of time of use.
Yeah.
So it's us, it's usually helpful to know what the peak and off-peak rate should be.
Yeah.
So, so you've got for residential and for industrial. If you could just somehow indicate, you know, what is the off-peak and what is the peak rate? Because here you've used an average number, right?
Yeah, well, that wasn't, it was actually kept, it's so, it's not an average, but it was basically the way that, yeah, it was the way that.
Weighted average, right?
In those examples, um, so I didn't actually pull up the
Right.
My website. So we have it on there.
But, but you're right, on the website, it, it.
Yeah, so the website.
Website shows, on the website it shows and it shows going back a few months, right?
Yeah, well, actually, it, it goes back many, in fact, if you wanna, it goes back many, many years on the website. But yeah, the current, the current six months are on the website.
For time of use, yeah.
For time of use, for both industrial and.
So, so no, I just wanna know going forward
Yeah.
in terms of the proposal, wha, what would the difference be?
So, um, so there's a, we do a calculation between the two, um, and it's driven by a bunch of, so we have not changed the percentage between the two in terms of what. We don't change the, the difference between the on-peak and the off-peak. Basically, yeah, we just basically take what the, what the actual costs are. And we basically run it through a spreadsheet for lack of a better answer. Um, I can pull up the.
So the ratio between on-peak and off-peak is not changing for this time, for this year's, uh, rate change. But then because we apply the total cost with a increased, right, percentage increase. So that kind of, kind of cascades into both the off-peak and the on-peak rate.
He's just, he's trying to give a sense of what the difference is and I don't know.
But what I'm trying to do is see if there is a signal here you can use to influence behavior. Okay, so I'm, I'm trying to see if you if you can use the, if you can use the rate making, rate, rate communicate, rate change communication process to also encourage time of use adoption.
So I, Vivek, I look at the data, I'm here and I, I interpret it to, to show me the benefit of that by looking at the residential A versus the residential time of use, right?
There's, there's that.
That ab, that weighted average number, so
Yep.
one sixty-one versus one thirty-nine. If I do time of use, I'm gonna pay a weighted average of one thirty-nine versus if I don't, I'm gonna pay an, at, at one sixty-one. So that is like a twenty percent, like, I'm just doing.
Yeah, it's, it's rough, but somewhere between ten and twenty, yeah.
Something like that in terms of it.
I know, but, but if I know the rates, like, you know, so I was asking Dave, you know, he says most of his stuff is off-peak, right?
Well, it's cause that's what we do at our house.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, maybe there's, but
Depends what you do.
Being like, on average, people are gonna save somewhere between ten and twenty percent by going with time of use. And possibly then more if you're being more proactive about that, right?
So Pam, Pam brings up the very key piece, which is, before you get into the difference, there's a clear benefit of being time of use. And then just to answer your question, so in February, um, the off-peak fuel charge was four point four cents. And on-peak fuel charge was eleven point
Eleven points.
Or ten point eight cents. So it's a, it's a significant difference.
So it's a significant difference, so it's, it's worth.
That's the ratio you're talking about, right?
So there's value in communicating.
That ratio carries over to the twenty twenty-five rates.
It is.
Yeah, that's what, again, I think that's what it's saying, right?
So yes, answer to your question. So as we, so the, the one thing that we talked about many times is we have set up the rates for time of use, we encourage it, but we're not massively promoting it because it requires different meter capability, which we have not yet installed. And so part of.
Our capital number is high because we're doing the AMI.
And we're doing the AMI replacement program. So when we get, so a year and a half from now, uh, when, when we're near the final phase of getting everything to have time of use and the meters, we're gonna push aggressively on TOU.
But on that note, uh, we are concluding the MDM project tomorrow. Yes. And then we're gonna have hourly data and we're gonna do shadow building, which means we're gonna inform, like you said, educational opportunity. We're gonna inform the customers, if you are on TOU, this is what you will pay.
Yeah.
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 See, 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 Pam, if you look at the numbers, like sixteen versus eighteen point six eight, it's not such a big difference. But four to ten cents, that's a big difference.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That, this is a summary. So this is the weighted average, just to show the bill impact. Uh, for you, if you wanna know what's the ratio, that rate, um, uh, table on the website is the most up to date. And like I said, the ratio is about three, 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 uh, versus one.
Yeah.
It's the same for the twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, so, so that, so it's, it's a more powerful, if you can, if you actually communicate that, it's a, it's, but, but.
Yeah, it's beyond time of use and maybe you don't even have to change a thing and you're still gonna get a benefit, right? Or take even more proactive and, you know, be like Dave and do your laundry at midnight or, or whatever you're doing. And.
It's after seven, it's after seven, it's after seven.
Yeah, so, yeah, right. Yeah, and I think that would be the thing to present to customers, like, hey, you're doing this, if you change this much and use TOU, but not just tell them, hey, you could save money with TOU. You're, you're both trying to change, exactly right.
Yeah, one, one, one thing to remember though about time of use is, is when you get home and you're a typical eight to five and you come home, you turn your lights on. Right? I, we wanna promote it, but at the same time, it's a penalty for folks who live that eight to five lifestyle. Right? It, 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 it's, it's, you, we always need to be aware of that. And, you know, if you can take advantage of time of use, that's great, but many people are not able to take advantage of that because of their lifestyle. And the one thing that I'm, I'm always afraid of is it's a, it's a penalty, right? And, and you, you know, it, we need to consider that, that, that how many people live and come home in our home and need to use their appliances and turn things on at five o'clock. Right? You can opt into it, but we always need to be aware, you know, be aware of that as, you know, as one of our rates, you know, it should always be something that is, is ever present in our mind.
Yeah, so Bob, that's a great point. That's why I think we wanna do like a whole year of education, do the shadow building. And then when we do have the AMI meters, have the so entire TOU, new TOU rate design, it's an opt-out. If it doesn't fit their lifestyle, then they can opt out of this rate and just have the regular rate.
And as Bob said, as my RMLV coal miners hat from five to seven, I'll wear that. I don't need to turn the lights on until we set the clock.
Baloney sandwiches until seven o'clock and then, then you can have your hot meal.
Um, so can I just, let me just make sure I'm really clear in terms of the the rates that we're saying we're going to vote for today are no different than the ones we voted in November. Is that?
No, we didn't.
Is that higher? Oh, we didn't vote for them, but the estimate was six percent.
I'm sorry, we set the budget
Yeah.
at a certain expectation.
Was, cause I, I'd set my budget for the town.
Yeah.
Based on a six percent increase, which is now a six point seven percent increase. And I've already presented to the finance committee. So that point seven, I don't have in my budget.
So it is not the exact same.
Okay, well, yeah. And what you're really voting on is the base rates, so the, the rate sheet, so you're not voting on power supply.
No, I got that.
Okay.
But I just wanna make sure the difference between what we voted for before, which, thank you for correcting me, was the budget at a certain rate expectation.
Yep.
The rate that we're now voting for are slightly different, but not significantly different than.
Totally not, it's about the same, but yeah. Um. Oh, these are the.
What, one, one point that, that I, I'm sorry for keep in, interrupting, it's hard to jump in, but, you know, the, the, the main fact, you know, our revenue went up, correct?
Yes.
Revenue went up, now we're increasing rates, right, by six percent. And we, we talked about a rate increase before and I think my, my gut feel on this is, you know, we're making more money, yet we're increasing prices. You know, we, we, we have some anticipated cost increases, but you know, does that translate to six percent? You know, that, uh, you know, you, every year we go, you know, five percent, six percent, five percent, six percent, that, that's significant over time. Right? That, 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 that's one, one thing, you know, does it have to be a six percent increase? The last time we went up, we, 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 we overestimated, we scaled it back. I'm, I'm a big believer that, you know, we should go up in incremental, if we need more, increase more, but don't, don't increase for the sake of increasing, you know, that, 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 it, it's one thing we need to be always cognizant of. We have low rates, let's, let's keep it low, it makes it attractive.
Is there any wiggle room or Bob, do you have a suggestion of a, of a, I'm just, I mean, where does that come in? Where, you know? It ties to the budget. So, so Bob, Bob, we, we haven't been doing five or six percent for the past several years and we can give you that history, but we're like, we, we, what we tried to give you here, instead, instead of doing budget to budget, cause if we're gonna do the budget to budget, we would have been roughly three point three percent, which is what we work. Which, and I'm not saying three point cents not anything, but what we decided to do this year is, is again, what the customers care about is what the actual bill is each month. That's what they pay with. They don't pay with percentages, they pay with dollars. And your point's well taken. You know, last year we had forecasted roughly, um, almost a hundred, a hundred and fifty-five dollars in average bill. It ended up working out to be a hundred and fifty-two dollars in average bill for a whole bunch of reasons. Um, but the primary reason, it, it, and as Megan mentioned, it's tied to the actual, um, our actual cost times the actual kilowatt hours we sold. Which you'll see in a few minutes is tied to weather and it's also tied to power supply, which is the biggest variable. So now, so, so we would have been one fifty-five to one sixty-one and I can go back and run that calculation. But we're trying to really be transparent to the customer to say, your average bill, and that's why I put the residential one back in place, is gonna be roughly ten dollars a month higher this year than last year. That's what we forecast, but it could be less. Nine dollars fifty-six cents.
It would be super helpful to see what our rate increases were over the last several years. What's that percentage? Right? And on, it's a percentage number, you know, cause bills are higher. Uh, the last three years, right? And, and, and now, let, i, is there a ballpark of what they were?
Yeah, they're, um, they're in the range, so of what, of what the budget to budget was?
No, what, 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 what was our act, what would you say was our actual percentage of increase on your average bill last year? It was three percent. You, you know, economically, or, you know, if. Or, you know, if we could handle that, let's do a three percent, a lower increase, you know, I I. Again, I I think a six, I think a six percent is a significant jump.
So Bob, just to clarify, are you talking about rate increase percentage or bill increase percentage? I think that's quite different. It depends on how many kilowatt hours they use.
If you look at the last couple of years, we had shock ther- shock therapy when we, I think one year, it's ten, ten percent or twelve percent. And then we talked about rate stabilization. Bob brought it up, and we talked, and we came way down. So again, we, uh, two months ago, three months ago, we're talking about six percent, now we're at six point seven, seven percent, call it whatever. Um, and we're not talking about rate stabilization, so it's so close, but I agree with what Bob's saying is, we were way off those other two years and. And then came drastically down from that ten percent, twelve percent, and we're really in the.
We're we're averaging about five percent. And again, the key driver of of this, and Bob alluded to it earlier, it's what's really gonna happen. To the forward price curve of the oil market. That's gonna have a huge variable in terms of what the, what this really looks out, what this really works out to be. Well, that, do you go ahead?
Uh, from like a couple of years ago, bro, it's, it's really, we really should be looking at comparing year on year, what we're really approving is the distribution charge. Because that's what's covering, that's what's. We should, I mean, not to say ignore the power supply increases, but those are always pass-throughs and those are always fluctuated up or down. And they either help or they hurt. Uh, what we really should be really comparing, so we have a very good understanding of what we're actually approving. And what we're actually doing to the rates is just looking at the distribution charge, cuz that's, that does not change, that is locked in, that's not variable. So that, those top three calls is really what we should be focusing on. Um, year on year, if we wanna see what we've done over the past few years, we ought to look at what we've been improving in that area. And how much we're increasing the rates there, because the power supply of the last two years have helped us. And this year it could hurt us because of what's happening in January and February. So I I I I think from a a rate. And to get a good idea of what we're actually approving, and what we've been approving over years, and we're actually kind of contributing to the customer and what they're paying. Is really those top three line items, because the other stuff's pass-through and it's out of our control.
Good point. So what is that, what is that? Four dollars and seventy-two cents? Or what's the percentage?
It's, well, it's five point five percent of the distribution charge, overall bill, it's like three percent. So you you can look at it, you can look at it two ways. You can look at, we're increasing the rate that we control by five and a half percent. But right now, based on what we think the power supply is gonna do, it's about a three percent increase overall. But we're real, it's it's two numbers, and maybe we need to look at both.
Um. But but Jason, I think at the end of the day, the customer looks at the total, right?
That's what we just mentioned, if we wanna understand what our impact is, we gotta look at that, because that's our impact, that's.
That's the control stuff, that's the stuff we actually control, we can actually see we have visibility in, that we we know is gonna, it's actually gonna be there. Um, it, that's what we need to really be focusing on. In the power supply, it's nice to have the visibility, it's nice to see and compare of what we think it might do. Um, but in reality, we're really just approving the top three roles.
So just, so given what Bob said, and I think everybody's sensitive to, um, the cost increases. We're also coming off two very cold months where our customer bills were pretty high. Um, at least if I look at my own, it was definitely shocking, cuz we, you know, just used a heck of a lot more. Um, energy, but i- is it, do we need the full amount of this five point five percent on the base cost? Given the fact that in January and February, the the volume was up significantly.
Yeah, we're proposing to change the trade April first. So there's, yeah. Comes down really.
We lost a quarter.
Yeah, okay.
At the end of the day, the answer to your question is, no, this fits the budget.
Okay.
And and Jason's right, and you you can look at numbers every different way. We're trying to be as clear and transparent. The only thing you're really voting on is customer charging different energy. And and your energy efficiency.
Especially when not changing.
And and we've left that.
This year, yeah, we we we're gonna update you on the, all the new programs that we're having. And if it comes to like, okay, there's a lot of uptake on on the program, we might propose increasing the E, uh, EEC charge, but this year we're not.
So, so Pam brings up a a great point, and when you, when you're talking about your electric bill being, you know, six hundred dollars a month. Because you're all-electric, or seven hundred, you know, a six percent increase is is significant. On 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 that charge, right? So that that's kind of the, I know we're using an average bill to look at it, but if you are electrified. It's 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 a more intense increase, right? And and you're gonna, you're gonna see it, it's gonna be, you know, forty dollar range. You know, you're like, wow, jumped up forty dollars, so.
On the, on the, on the flip side, because we're talking about April, which is generally a low period, it's. You know, it should still be significantly better than our January, February bills, right?
Your, yeah, no, correct. Be less than the ones you're paying, include even e- even adding the rate in, the rate increase into it. But we, and we look at those, I mean, look at all of those elements in terms of our our intention is to dampen. The radical up and down that power supply would do. By using, we have a fuel reserve that we that we make adjustments, um, small adjustments each each, uh, each month. But we try and dampen that.
Well. I would say a year on year, April twenty twenty-four versus April twenty twenty-five, excluding power supply. You just paid four dollars and seventy-two cents more this April compared to last April.
That's, thank you, Jason, that's exactly what we're trying to get across. It's five dollars on a hundred and fifty-five dollar bill. We talk about percentages, but it's five bucks.
So then why are we going up to six point seven instead of five point five?
Six point seven, where are you?
No, like, I'm looking at the rates, you're like, the municipality with six point seven percent increase, right? And again, cuz I have a large budget, or we just added two all-electric buildings in town, another million foot kilowatts. So why wouldn't it be a five point five percent increase? Hold on, let me see, come back, where do I see it? Municipal C, um, six point seven percent increase.
That's including the power supply, right? But there's not a breakout in the slides.
Well, yeah, if you want, we can, we can, so in the back, we can go and look at each one of those. Um, we looked at each one of these different categories, and and back to what Megan was mentioning, um, and back to the. Uh, request that is part of the goals for the for the team in twenty twenty-five. Is to look very carefully across all these different things, which we do anyways.
Yeah.
And so we looked at the cost, we looked, we took a whole bunch of, uh, considerations into, um. How we allocated the various costs and how we move the various costs between those key rate classes. Um, you'll see that industrial TOU, TOU went up the highest, right? And that was intentional, right? But you also look at the the industrial TOU rate, which is thirteen point seven one cents, which is an incredibly competitive rate. And and we keep, we keep trying to fine tune the adjustments in terms of where we're putting our capital costs. Um, the, um. At at the end of the day, um, we we can walk you through, I mean, there's some pretty deep spreadsheets that go through to to generate these summary numbers. Um, the municipal is basically a commercial rate, that's the way it's set up. And the only difference, um, is that it doesn't have taxes tied to it, so there's no sales tax tied to it. We tried to the best of our ability to dampen the increases where we, where we thought it was appropriate, given the cost structure. Again, back to the earlier slide, these rates are tried to tie, are are meant to tie to the cost to serve those classes of customers.
Yeah, but if you look, and I, you you look at three months ago, so you look at residential A, we talked about six percent increase, it was six point three. So bring it down to six, six point two, bring it down to six, seven point oh for the commercial, the seven in the industrial, seven point nine. But then you look at the other two rates, you could bring it be at six, so, you know, with two months ago, we felt that the number was six percent. And and two months later, or three months later, wherever it's been, we're now over the six percent. Which isn't a lot of money, a lot of difference to change, so why couldn't we look at it and find a way to get to six?
So what would be the change if we, if we, instead of six point seven, the board said, make that six? What's the effect?
I'm just saying, even like the residential.
Have to allocate that to the other rate classes then.
You're moving.
It's weird.
So, so, um. What we are responsible to do is to the best of our ability allocate the cost across the the rate categories. So in terms of us saying we want to favor one class over another, is is not consistent with our responsibility.
But what Bob said earlier was revenues are up, yet we're increasing, so if revenues are up.
Revenues are up because the cost, right?
But that's what I'm saying, so if you, if you, you may not make as much, but you, the freight pay doesn't pay more, like, I I guess, isn't there a balance there where?
There is a balance there, it's, that's a great question, Dennis, and that's why at the very beginning, we indicated, and Jason mentioned it as well. Um. Our budget of twenty twenty-five is intended to have no debt, and we have no debt. And so we are, we are incurring now costs, and we've, we've been saving up for costs, but we have to also make sure, and so. This is, this is driven primarily by cash. It does impact the income statement, but Vivek knows intimately well. This is a cash business, and so we have significant multi-million dollars worth of investments that we will be writing checks for this year. For the AMI system, for the AMI replacement system, for the substation, for land, and for the initial phases of the solar PV projects. So while we have some buffer, you know, in our, you know, we're we're basically, uh, from the budget, our intention is to be in twenty twenty-five. Um, our, our net income is gonna be, rate of return is gonna be about six percent. We can go up to eight percent, we're not there. But we can, but that's where we targeted. So we wanna be careful that we don't end up in a situation where we don't have enough cash to cover all these. And that's how we look, there's a lot of stuff that goes in behind the scenes to bring us to, hey, there's eight numbers that you guys are voting on.
Eight percent, though, I've always questioned, because all I do is, and and it's in every business, all I do is increase my overhead, and I can make eight percent more. If I reduce my overhead, my expense to less. So like you said, you can make up to eight percent, so I hire more people if my overhead's more, then I can make eight percent of that, right? So all that can keep going up based on.
You can run the business all sorts of ways, and the waves, and the way we run this business.
Not, not, like, you can't add people and and increase your eight percent, it's, you have to increase your capital assets.
Yeah, yeah, it, again, we, this is not a, you know, back to what Ray's point earlier. We we run this as a commercial business, but we run it as a commercial business, it's a lot of, and we're not highly regulated, but there are a lot of constraints in terms of what we can and can't do. Our real focus in terms of running the business is to make sure we keep a much downward pressure on the rates, but more specifically, the monthly bills. All the different rate classes pay, but to make sure that we make the proper investments, and we've talked about over a while, we are basically, well, we have specific projects that we're working through. And we're also, you know, back to what Megan put in there, it was a small point, but it was a big point, which is right now, we are still preparing for electrification. With a doubling of load by twenty fifty, and so we're slowly, we can't just, and you know intimately well, and everybody knows this. You can't just say, hey, look, we're gonna build a new substation in one year, um, there's preparation in the same, all of these things, so. To answer your question, um, we designed and we made all the rate adjustments to out properly allocate the cost. That we anticipate making or incurring, and that goes back to the budget, right? And the budget, the reality is, the key number, back to your question, is roughly forty-five billion dollars, right? You know, the whole, the whole revenue was about a hundred and twenty million dollars, but that twenty-seven percent roughly that Megan had in that chart. Indicates that's the base revenue. Everything else floats, everything else floats based on load, kilowatt hour sales, and actual cost incurred.
And I just wanna wa- add one thing, when you talk about municipal, school, and industrial, all these three-way classes have demand charges. Why? Because the the the, so they they have higher power demand. That's actually what's driving the capital investment. So I would say, I mean, I don't wanna make a statement right now because we haven't finished doing cost of service study, but if we do that. So right now, just look between all these rate classes, I think those three are actually, for whatever reason, historically, the rates have been too low. I don't wanna make it sound like I'm I'm kind of ma- making that statement, but but I I I will present like. The the final cost of service study to kind of prove what what's actually causing which part of the cost. But just looking at all these rate classes, that's what we've been seeing, because when we look at our rates, so. Amwick does the rate comparison for all the MRP's and the IOUs. Our commercial and industrial rates are way lower than a lot of utilities. So I'm not saying we wanna just increase rates for these rate classes, but.
Yeah, and and again, I'm at, I just added, I'll be adding two electric, we just went live with one with the other one in in September. All-electric buildings, million kilowatts, and my demand charge, my demand charge is gonna be huge. Cuz everybody's gonna walk in at the same time every morning, turn every switch on and every.
We need to talk about peak demand.
So when you look at that, this could really affect me even more than the six percent, because my demand charge is gonna be higher, cuz. Everyone starts at the same time every morning, everybody goes home at the same time every night, but my demand charge is gonna be boom, every light on in the building at seven.
And we give Dennis a million for a battery.
Yeah, I gotta put a battery backup.
Really, we have, we got the, we have programs for this, right?
So, but, you know, it's just, every community is gonna start doing this. We're we're talking about building a school, and you guys are talking about building a school, it's gonna be all electric, um, those demand charges, so what that? Everyone walks in the school, everything comes on, cuz all the people are coming in, that's really gonna be an effect on people's numbers.
So, so that's the exact context of what we've been discussing for a while in terms of revising our peak, or Shred the Peak program. Because the current program is not very effective in terms of changing load on the residential basis. And most of the commercial industrial buildings, they have no interest. Now, in your case, you will. So one of the things that we do wanna do is figure out, um, and and this is part of the reason why we're, we've moved to the MDM system, so. And Megan's mentioned the shadow billing stuff, we're trying to, and we're, and and the AMI replacement. We wanna, we wanna make a program that allows us to, um, at the end of the day, help you guys be as efficient as you possibly can. Uh, but we're still in the early stages of that.
Now, when you look at shave the peak and everything, um, schools, schools now don't, they're not seven to three thirty anymore, there's. There's se- six in the morning for cares programs till eleven, ten at night.
Ten at night.
And they're running seven days a week and all summer.
Yeah.
The the days of, um, schools being an eight-hour day.
Long gone.
A long gone, so, um, when I, when we talk about the like special needs programs, I can't just drop the temperatures down. And when you look at fourteen air handlers on a high school, I can't shut down parts of the building because of how it's split up and run. So that means engineering has to change in the future to allow me to say, I'm gonna shut off the top two floors completely, if the programs don't run there. So it's not as easy to say shit, shed the peak in the municipality world, cuz I.
You don't have a lot of leverage, and so that's part of it, so the other elements in terms of why we look at Shred the Peak. Our focus has been, and the batteries are a good example, um, that transmission cost, so as Megan mentioned, that transmission cost. Um, the the transmission rate is up twenty percent between twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. So back to the suggestion, how can we absorb part of that? We've tried to absorb part of that and not push all of that on, we were supposed to, but we tried to absorb a little bit of that. But at the end of the day, the message is, we are much more efficient in terms of managing our peaks with utility assets, such as batteries and generators. Um, and that's why we're making the investments in in the twenty megawatts, you know, we're going from five megawatts to twenty megawatts in the next twelve months. Is to, is to create that leverage so that we can push it. Again, not single out, single out any individual group, but take that entire, um, transmission. Uh, cost in the total budget, which this year is about twenty-three million dollars, and trying to dampen that down and get it back down to sub twenties. That's what we're, so at the end of the day, we, our real view is that we are gonna be as aggressive as we possibly can and learn from as many people as we can. In terms of how to prompt and encourage customer behavior, but our view is that currently is that the real leverage is utility assets to drive those peaks down during the peak hours. And we're actually, and and the batteries is a, is a perfect example of that strategy, and that'll push, that'll push everybody down, so. When we, when we sit here and present these rates, it's not like, hey, you don't really care. You know, you guys know, we're, we're making investments to manage the overall cost structure, um, so I hope that helps.
No, I appreciate it. Like I said, it's just a matter of, um, the reason we're all here is to keep an eye on.
All of it.
The rates for all of it, and you guys as well.
All of it.
I'm not taking that from anyone, um, but every year we start off at a high number and Bob goes, what's about, what about the rate stabilization fund? How can we look at it? And we always come down, and this year we're coming in and we're not coming down, and we're going live with it in four weeks. That's my only.
Well, yeah, but but just in in fairness, right? If if we do what we did last year, you know, we basically said last year was a three and a half, I think three point three percent change. And if we were to compare budget to budget, and back to Jason's point, we'd be at the same number, all right? Now, I'm not saying three percent's nothing, but you guys understand, you know, we are, you know, our cost structure, labor being a key piece of it, right? Uh, it, there is a, there's a natural increase, so I think we're doing a good, you know, our focus is to try and make all of our actions, not just our customers more efficient, but us more efficient. Um, but but the other element is the real leverage, so that's the operating cost, which is the nut that we're talking about. The real leverage, however, is to be as aggressive as we can in terms of the power supply, and we have, again, weather has been in our favor, right? But also the things that we've been doing over the past few years have put us in favorable light, um, to to keep the downward pressure on our, on our power supply cost. Which is the key driver, and again, all I'm saying is, there's, there's multiple things that we do on an ongoing basis. You know, the message that you guys are communicating to to the leadership team is, you know, we need to be as aggressive as we can. In terms of keeping the upward pressure on our cost down, and since we are a not-for-profit. And since we are a not-for-profit, that means we keep, you know, we keep downward pressure on rates. There is only upward pressure on rates, but to dampen that, the magnitude of that upward pressure. Makes sense?
Are we, uh, are we ready for a vote or is there any requests for changes or differences on this or?
I'm sorry. There is one small change. When you guys get to it, we'll motion. But I, I put in the email last night, but the renewable, thank you Vivek. The renewable choice rider. So we did some cleanup on the renewable choice rider. It doesn't affect any dollar value. It's just technical cleanup, but we need your approval on that as well as the other, these other core rates. Um, so that you can properly submit those to the M P U.
So the motion, so the motion.
We always, I always go back to revenue and I, I, you know, we're allowed to make X amount of profit based on.
Based on capital assets.
Capital assets, correct. We're at six percent. Right now of that, that's what, what you said, so we're at six percent. Now, if we stay at six percent, right? That's, that's good. I mean, our, our mission, right? Our, our mission is rates, right? That's one of them.
Our mission is reliability. Right? In that order, reliable, low cost, non-carbon, in that order.
Yeah. So, so in, in that, you know, if we stay at six percent, right? And we can maintain that six percent target and, and maintain the not growth, but maintain it. And you know, as we, we, we're doing two massive projects right now. Substation, we're doing A M I.
And land.
Again, they're in the budget, but they have, you know, that, that's, those are things we budgeted.
But you're right, A M I and, and, and substation, those are.
Those aren't too big ones right now. That we're, we paid, we, they're, they're paid.
Well, we're committed to, we haven't written the checks for all the way yet.
Well, but we have money at the bank to process those checks, right?
Thirty eight million dollars? No, we don't, we don't, we don't have all the cash in the bank. So we have twenty eight million dollars of unrestricted cash. And we will spend probably thirty million dollars this year on those two projects, cash.
So then, then it comes back to us to decide, you know, at a certain point that we're going to need to bond or to get. If you get that, but those things that we heard, you know, costs, debt costs, right? So I, I, there's multiple things going on. But you know, our budget previously it said, we're, we're, we're capable of. My, my fear always is that, that, you know, and again, it, when we go up six point two percent or, or seven, and I appreciate you, you got to do that study. Because it, it, it's going to, it's going to tell us a lie, right? Who are the right customers to be charging more to? Cause we, we, right now we just don't know.
Well, we don't know, but we need to get better.
Be updated.
Yeah, up, updated, right? So who's, who, who would be, who should be paying the, the proper share more based on, based on what we're doing? But you know, we, we come in and ten and we come down, we, we live with, we know it was three last year, you know, can we live with, like you're saying, it was three point three percent.
What was the, so what, what I'm telling you is if you want to look at, um, back to Jason's point, the base load change versus the total bill, it was mid threes last year, it's mid threes this year.
Okay, so.
With this, with these rates, these rates equate to mid threes. That's what I'm trying to tell you. If you want it, if you, you can run down this any way you want. And we're trying to, we're trying, what we're really trying to focus on is what, you know, the customers. At the end of the day, they pay the bill with dollars. So what's the difference between this year and the last year? Uh, and it's not just budget to budget, it's what they really paid last year versus what we expect. They expect to pay this year. So if you leave power supply where it is, they'll spend five dollars. Four seventy two or they'll spend roughly five dollars more a month, four seventy two versus last year each month. I mean, that's, 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 um, apples to apples comparison. Right? And that five dollars or four dollars seventy two cents out of a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty one dollar bill is three point some odd percent. We can run the numbers real quick. So what I'm sharing with you is, we hear clearly the pressure and the desire and we feel it too, right? Or actually this budget is actually six hundred thousand dollars lower than what we forecast. And back to Megan's comment, we made our best estimate in terms of what the actual load is going to be for the year. But if we assume the load estimate that we made for the year, we'll be at, um, forty four point six million dollars rather than the budget, which is forty five point three million dollars. Now we think that, that we will not spend all the money that we have in the budget, so we won't need all of that. And the worst case, if it ends up being more extreme, we have reserves. So we do have the rate stabilization. And we will come to you because that number, our target is roughly six million, it's hovering around seven point four million. That's because of interest that has been accrued to it. We don't put it, we don't put anything into it or take anything out of it. Um, on a, on a annual quarterly basis, I might make a decision. Last time we did that, we took one point six million dollars out of it, again approved. Only twenty twenty one, we have many changes. So we have, we have the ability for cash if we wanted to trouble, but we're already pushed, you know, back to Vivek's comment, can we put downward pressure on it? We have. But we're trying to be very prudent. You don't want to end up in a situation where you are short cash, because this is a cash business.
Are you, are you driving it wanting to ask for a haircut on these rates at this point?
Well, that, that's where I was, I was getting it, right, right. But that's why I wasn't. Yeah, you know.
And, and Bob, the trade-off always is like you could, you could set it to zero, right? You could set everything to zero and then you say, what am I going to give up? Right? I mean, that's, that, that's, so you always have that conversation.
But that's, that's the budget process, but okay, yeah.
You know, that means we're taking life bombs off.
So, so, so I, I, I come back to, so from a question of process, we set a budget, right? So if this meets that budget, it's okay. If, if it was overshooting the budget, it's something you think about. So, so, so you think, you should be thinking about rates when you set the budget, right? Because the budget talks about activities that you need to do, right? And staffing you need to build. So, so you're thinking of an organizational capability and goals you want to achieve. And so that was my question. So that's why I asked, what is the, what is the rate you need to meet that budget? And if this is it, so if you, if you are going to reduce the rate, you're going to reduce the scope of what you want R M I to do. So, so, so I think that, that, that's the way. So it just can't be a rate discussion and not a scope discussion. It has to both.
One hundred percent, one hundred percent, but it just, sometimes we, we always aim high, right? And what can we live with? That, that make sure, and again, I, I always go back to how much revenue we generate, right? And if we're generating more revenue with that, and last year we were more efficient or what, what those factors were. We take that and we say, well, that, that was beneficial. How do we translate that back into this rate increase that says, all right, instead of six point three, is it five? You know, is it, uh, uh, you know, are these the right numbers for? Again, I, everything goes up, we all know that, right? Everything goes up, but how much it goes is important, right?
Totally agree. And so we're basically looking at a mid five. So if you want to just do base rate stuff, we're in the mid fives. And I think there's a general consensus, what's the, what's the general consensus of the inflation rate here? Three and a half, four percent? Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm at the same.
I suspect it'll be higher than that, but that's all right. That's.
Great. It even makes it more challenging. So, and, and we have some significant, so again, the financial, like we, um, we look at the financials every week. And not just, you know, what power supply is, but what our cash position is, what the forecast is relative to kilowatt hour sales, et cetera. So these numbers are not just, hey, it feels good. No, 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 but I want, again, you guys are part of the audience, but if anybody's playing back in this session, I want the rest of the organization to know. There's a significant amount of forecasting of cash flow, right? Cause again, cash flow is the critical piece. That's how we pay every bill, right? And we are, I love, we have to pay all of our bills. So, and we're in, and we are doing a great job in terms of managing cash. So back to that four percent, we also mentioned, as you pointed out, we have some significant cash outlays for two projects that we are already engaged on and potentially two other projects, right? So for, for those two, like I said before, right? We do a good job of managing our unrestricted cash and our restricted cash. Um, to allow us to make sure that we are not in a cash constrained position. You guys remember from our auditors, the past four years, three years, um, we have been recognized for managing, not just having a good audit, making sure things are done, but the comment has been our financials are strong. And in fact, our S and P is double A minus, which is excellent for a municipal utility. Again, that's because of how we're managing our cash. So to answer your question, you know, should that number be five instead of five point four? I mean, can we take a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand dollars off the budget? We, we took, so I just, I'm, as I shared with you, we're, we're very sensitive to this. So budget relative to what we think the revenue is going to be, if, if everything works out exactly as we planned, um, we, we will not spend all the way up to our budget. We don't do that. And that's, you, you see that every year, right? We're under budget. But, you know, back to the next point, you know, we could have tried to push it to get that last six hundred thousand dollars into the rate, which would have pushed it a couple of tenths of a percent up. We chose not to do that. So we've already put downward pressure. The things you have asking us to do, we've already done. I think, so, so the message is clear, but in, and we'd be happy to, and redo this, uh, the next time around. You know, the time that we, I say the time, the, the analysis and the assumptions and the work we do to make all this stuff work out. Um, there, there's a, we'd happy to walk you through, but it's not, it's not, we're not just picking numbers. It's, and I know you're not saying that, but I, yeah, it's, it's it, it, this is, this is a well managed budget. I mean, honestly, and, and our financials are well managed and they, I mean, there is upward pressure on cost and we just talked about those. Um, but our reliability is better than it's ever been, right? We are, we are more compliant than we have ever been, uh, in terms of, of, uh, being ahead and we can decide to ratchet that back. You know, that's a million, a million two right there in terms of ratcheting that back down if we so decide to do that, right? There's a bunch of levers that we can pull if we want to, but we don't need to pull them right now. The rates are on, you know, we're in the, we're in the seventy percentile, we're not in the middle, right? On, on residential and we're in the bottom quartile on, on commercial, the C N I space. As, as Megan mentioned, so as we look at that over and over again, we say, hey, there's some imbalance there. So that's, but we have to go through the proper analysis to be able to. And we did that last time we did in twenty twenty one, but we need to come back and look at that again, because the world's changing around us and our mix of businesses changing as well. Anyways, all said and done. You know, we, we are proud and confident of the analysis that we can, we've done. If we, to make, you know, go back and, I mean, we, we went through so many cycles of making adjustments and you know, you know, when you first do the button, when you first do the rate stuff, and you make adjustments and, and then you make some more adjustments. And when you start making adjustments in terms of what you think everything should be, right? The numbers are still where they are. You've got, you know, you're, you're optimized as best you can be. And that's where we are.
Are we ready for a vote? Or I mean, I, I open to ideas to like, if you want to have a, a week to think about it and call a quick meeting or if you want to. I don't, I don't want to, I'm just saying.
You guys, I, and I'll say this just real quickly. You could do that if you want, but every time you call a meeting, there's massive overhead.
It's fine. I, I'm only asking because there's a lot of questions and it's a lot to process on a, on a two day or a four day, uh, workbook. So I'm just, I'm, I'm, if, cause if there are, if there aren't, then let's vote. Yeah, that's all I'm saying. You're good to vote.
You're good. I think we discussed it all and a lot of good points every way and, um, people expressed their concerns, but.
I, I, yeah, sorry. I just wish we'd done more to fix the imbalance in the C and I, I don't know why we're not, we haven't been doing that over time. You know, I didn't realize we were at the bottom.
We're not doing, we're not jerking that. We're, we're doing it steadily over time.
Okay, okay. All right. There is a little bit of that in there. Okay. Is there? Yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I mean, and I can also point out as being on the board for a while now, that there was a cost of service study that P L M did. I can't remember how many years ago, five, six. Yeah, five years ago, whatever it was. And they found that the resident, that the residential rate was being subsidized by the commercial. So I think you really need the cost of service.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Understood. And I remember what you, I remember now that you say that, I remember. It's volume. Okay. Who's going to make the motion?
I apologize. Oh, wait, please. Wait, wait. I'm so sorry. Could you pass this down? Cause we have to get the only one copy, right? Forgive me. This, this motion has the additional rate in it, which is that yellow one. So if you read that one and share it. Sorry, I apologies.
Saving paper, this is a good thing.
All right, I'll move that the assistance advisory board recommend that the board of commissioners vote to accept the general manager's recommendation to replace the following M D P U rates effective for billings on or after April first, twenty twenty five. Replace two nine four renewable choice rider with three two two. Replace three oh nine residential schedule A with three one seven. Replace three one zero residential time of use schedule A two with three one eight. Replace three one one commercial schedule C with three one nine. Replace three one two industrial time of use schedule one with three two zero and replace three one three. School schedule S C H with three two one.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
I move the board of commissioners on the recommendation of the city advisory board vote to accept the general manager's recommendation to replace the following M D P U rates effective for billings on or after my April first, two thousand twenty five. Replace two ninety four renewable choice rider with three twenty two. Replace three oh nine residential schedule A with three seventeen. Replace three ten residential time of use schedule eight two eight two with three eighteen. Replace three eleven commercial schedule C with three nineteen. Replace three twelve industrial time of use schedule, I'm assuming that's an, that's an I with three twen- with three twenty. Replace three thirteen school schedule S C H with three twenty one. Send that down to Greg.
Okay, um, ready for a vote? Yep. Any more discussion? Hopefully not. Okay. On favor? And that's five.
Okay. Thank you very much, Greg, and thank you, Megan.
Team effort. Yeah, thank you guys.
So certificate retirement, I think it was decided that every single year this topic will be reviewed and decided. So last year was when the biggest change was made, uh, from like a kind of annual three percent increase to a jump um, to fifty five percent. And for this year, we look at our, our kind of a reserve of certificates and anticipated certificates generation. We recommend to keep that retirement rate at fifty five percent for, for the reasons I put in the slide. And mainly just like the supply of certificates is a little bit constrained. There are no major additions in terms of clean energy contracts. And some of the hydro contracts were cleaning up those, you know, some of them are about to expire and we're likely not to renew just because of the economics of those contracts. And then, um, when we changed to fifty five percent, we are already, like we, we, we started with the lowest, lowest value uh, certificates, retirement, and then we sell the higher value certificates with fifty five percent. We are already eating into the higher, this next second tier of certificates. Um, so, um, and then I guess, as you can see in the chart, once you pass, you know, that, um, fifty to sixty percent, the cost, the additional cost of certificate retirement will, will kind of a uh, increase significantly. So for these reasons, we still recommend fifty five percent likely unless we get some really big new renewable contracts for, probably for the next two, three years, we may not change this either.
But the vote today is just for twenty twenty five retirement rate.
I'll move that the Armel D citizens advisory board on the recommendation of the general manager vote to approve the twenty twenty five annual certificate retirement rate of fifty five percent of retail K W H sales.
Second.
I'm in favor.
I move the Armel D board of commissioners, the recommendation of the city advisory board and general manager vote to approve two thousand twenty five annual certificate retirement rate, fifty five percent of retail, uh, K W H sales.
Any discussion? All in favor? Move that a five oh, yes. Thank you.
I mean, I, we, we want to grow that percentage, but I, this year, I'm, I'm on board with fifty five.
Okay, policies. Okay. So there's a, in your table and we'll put it up on the screen, but there's a policy table. Today's discussion is not to go through any individual policies, but basically to lay out, um, what our plan is. And as you guys know, we have about, about, we have thirty two policies, uh, which is a lot. Um, every one of them was put in a particular point in time for some particular reason. As you guys know, things don't just appear out of nowhere. Somebody did them for a reason, but sometimes those reasons disappear. So just take a look at your screen while I, while, while, Derek works on the technical issue. We basically, um, looked at. We basically um, looked at all of them. Our, our normal course of op, uh, our normal course of business is to uh, review each policy every three years. And you guys remember that we've been in a, kind of a habit of trying to do at least one or two. Um, uh, ideally, we're doing um, three or four. But anyways, in that chart you have in front of you, um, there's two colors. Um, the blue, the, I think in your screen, there's yellow across the top and then the bottom is uh, orange on the, on the bottom. Um, we went through those basically and the top um, roughly twelve are ones that we would keep. Um, some of them we have recently updated. Um, but we basically are in the mode of, of keeping that group. Um, tobacco, sustainable energy, um, public common policy, community relations. You can read the list uh, with me. Drug free workplace, R M L D procurement, which goes back to some of the discussion views I mentioned right before with policies that you guys set um, for us to follow. Uh, as the management team. Um, we talked about the board document policy, code of conduct. Code of conduct uh, is one that we made a, a run at. Um, about two and a half years ago, we called it serving with excellence. Your feedback on that particular one was it needs to have some teeth. It's very aspirational. Uh, we will go back and make some revisions to that, but we do believe that a code of conduct should be a policy. And that's why it's uh, in this top category. Uh, the Board of Commissioners nineteen, that's one where you guys, we reviewed with you and we updated back in May of last year. Drug and alcohol, um, citizen advisory board is C two. Uh, again, these are ones that we would create. Um, uh, keep and create and then uh, we, there's a one which is the release of the executive session minutes um, as well. But those are the ones that we um, would like to keep and continue to review on a regular basis. The second half, which are safety committee, um, paid sick leave, the rest of them, and there's, and there, roughly half of them. Those are ones that why we say we would, we would want to remove them. We would want to turn them into a procedure as opposed to into a policy. Um, and then we have to do some content update as well. Um. Uh, you can see in that one, there's, there's facility use, um, anonymous communication, vehicle use. These are all policies, dress codes. There's a lot of pieces in there. Um, we will, of course, as we do each one of these, review them with you. So we, we won't make any changes until we get approval because right now they're all policies. But that's the strategy and the direction we want to go to. The key piece is, as we have already been doing, we've been trying to streamline them and have them be internally consistent. Um, as you have fewer of them, it's easier to make them internally consistent. But that's the overall strategy of what we'd like to do going forward. So we're not really looking for approval. Any feedback's good. But our, our goal and intention besides just cleaning up each one individually, but also there's a strategy in terms of how we would probably move some of them to procedures. And as you know already, in many of the ones that we reviewed recently, there have been elements of those policies that we've actually moved into procedures. Question.
So, so I, I noticed uh, it's like, uh, you have paid sick leave, the tuition reimbursement, you have paid in medical event. Those are, are basically things that we don't have any control over. It, it's just to mostly their.
Right.
State run.
Yep.
You know, they're, they're, I don't know how they even became a policy. They're probably one point time. So I think that, yeah, uh, uh, the trust fund, you know, I, I, I don't know if there is one, I don't know if there's something you must do procedurally.
Well, we, we'll make sure we keep, before making changes, we take that into account.
But I, I, I do agree with, with um, movie goes into certain um, other procedures that you, that you have.
Yep.
Uh, you'd have to go to uh, tuition reimbursement, a perk, right, that is provided to an employee, right, but uh, I don't know. To the policy, right? I, I, it, it should be a procedure.
Yeah, I mean, like, you know, you're looking number twenty seven, the, the use of R M L D information systems. That goes back to nineteen ninety seven, when each of us was given a laptop that belonged to the department. Part of the communication.
That's a good question, though. So let's, let's use use of information systems as a, as a good example. Um, if someone violates a policy related to use of information systems, what's the difference between that and violating a procedure with use of information systems? If you talk about like disciplinary action or like, or resolution path, what's the difference between a policy and a procedure? Well, I, I kind of feel like you probably looked at this and, and, and made the determination.
Well, we start with the fact that we have these fine policies to say, I'm adhering to this when they lock in the doors. See, to grab onto with a policy rather than a procedure would be like, I'm training. Mistake, then, okay, we have to retrain you or we have to, you know, work with you to get the procedure down. So I, I, I see that as a difference. But to speak to your point, when there's things like laws, you know, we, we see this, sometimes people rewrite the law and contract. Um, they rewrite the law and policy. And I know we're always trying to bring it back to not have as much of that, have, say, refer to the law. Because law changes, you don't want to have your policies in, you know, your, your policies within C D As or other things.
Oh, sorry. Within C D As or other things to have you try to catch up with that all the time. So we really try to move away from that. And also oftentimes, your contract can make, you know, whatever the law offers better, but it doesn't take anything away from it. So it's always like, starts with the, the basis of the law and then it may enrich it, but it doesn't.
So. Did you benchmark like other M L Ps or in terms of what they are looking at as policies versus procedures? Like, I do feel like there's a few things in here that I would expect a policy and I would expect if somebody is given a laptop that they would sign a policy with how to use that. Yeah, I think my kids have to do that for school, right? They, they have to sign the thing when they get their iPad that they, you know, will follow this policy.
We would still have a signature, a procedure still has teeth. You can be disciplined for.
Okay, I just heard that it didn't. I just heard.
But many of our procedures have teeth to them where there's disciplinary acting title.
Okay, so then. Then what's the difference then?
Stronger because they're, they're signing off on a policy. Like when you're, when you're walking in and saying, here's our sexual harassment policy. You've read it, you're signing that, you've read it, that you understand it all. And I just, that's one of the differences I see in a procedure. We don't have anyone sign off on procedures.
So I feel like there are still, there are a few things in here that you know, identity theft, vehicle use, uh, information technology use. Those feel like important enough to the, you know, to the organization that and risky enough if they're not policies, that they should be policies. Other things like the strategic plan, um, surplus material, those those seem like good procedures, but.
Well, well, as we look at each one, so I think, I think what you're basically saying is just make sure that, that once, some of these are, are operational related. Some of these are, when you talk about policy, strategic direction related. Um, so as we go to each one, so we hear the feedback and as we look at each one, we'll, we'll, we'll look at them more carefully. We're just based, this is our initial cut. Uh, we actually reviewed this with council in terms of their recommendations as well, and council has experience with a lot of the other M L Ps. Um, so as we come to each one of these, but we wanted to give the first and foremost, as we've talked several times in the past, that there's several policies that we need to look at sooner rather than later. We haven't prioritized it quite yet.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we'll do that um, between now and the next meeting. But we want to give you, if, if, as we look at each one individually, our intention was, let's really do a, a more significant revamp in terms of how we're trying to structure these. And we want to give you an idea of what we're trying to do. So it was met. You guys will ultimately have approval in terms of how we handle each one of these. We'll bring them forward to you and we'll give the logic behind them. Um, and obviously, like we've done in the past, we'll spend time to make sure that they're clean, just consistent, we can possibly make them. We're also trying to make them that they are um, appropriately categorized between policy and procedure. And some of, back to Bob's point, are legal or potentially other ones are, are really overlapping into C B A contracts.
So it's a great, yeah, sorry. One thing, I think you're a little concerned about is strategy should be a policy. It's, you know, it should be something that the commissioner and the cap will have some influence on.
You do.
So, so I think like in terms of any board, the most important thing the board does is strategy.
And, and I think.
So, 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 so it's, it becomes a very fundamental role that, you know, the board plays.
Yeah, and so I think the element is how we, so complete agreement, right? The mechanism, the question is what mechanism is best to do that? And the mechanism that we're using currently is the um, annual goals, you know, the G M goals that we proved. And so if you remember two years ago, we did a major update to that, um, and, and we went through a discussion of it. Um, the policy right now for strategy simply says, we will, we will, we will assemble a strategic plan every five years. Our view is, we update the strategic plan every year. So we, it, it's not a useful policy. If we want to, if we want to our, our, our thought process and our, our view is that the mechanism is the goals are, are really driving the strategy of the organization. Rather than just saying, hey, you got to have a strategic plan every five years. That makes sense?
Yeah, the audience for that one is kind of an audience of one i- in terms of the general manager being responsible for setting the strategy versus the, some of these are relevant for the entire population of the organization.
Well, as we talked about before, the general manager goals are the corporate goals.
But, but Greg.
Yeah, but you're not to hold like, uh, uh, somebody walking in the, in the door, you know, in accounting or something responsible for making strategy for the organization, right? That's the general manager. But you might hold that same person responsible for
A portion.
identity theft prevention or something. So that's only my point. I'm arguing for why that procedure in that case makes
Yeah, yeah.
a little more sense than a policy.
I, I don't know if the structure, maybe some of these policies and procedures might, but by I, I, it, it, that many places have, you know, that your employee handbook is, this is the way, this
Yep.
dress code, you know, e- expectation. They're all considered there where, you know, we set separate, maybe there's something to think about separating those, those two, um, and then that way they don't become a policy. It's
That might be the mechanism for procedures. You're exactly right.
Yeah, and then, and then that way, you know, certain expectations are set in that, in that handbook. And then that's, they could, you could roll up a lot of things that might take certain things off, out, out of here. But don't, I, I mean, certainly policies will stay. Something, how you're going to do it.
There, there's been mixed feelings on that, in the, in the three towns that I've worked in before. Some had, you know, that type of thing. Others did not want it at all and were advised by council not to have a, a, a employee. So, so just, just to share that with you, it's not to, not to kill the idea, but just to say, there's, I, there's reasons they, that are more recent that, that they say they, they don't.
I, I just come back to the strategy because we do capital investment over very long times, right? So we're doing investments for a very long time. And so it's, if you set a goal, so, so it's just a question of how you think about it. If you're thinking year to year, you, you have to think year to year, but you also, because we aren't thinking long term. So, so I, I'm, I'm particularly sensitive about strategy having a long tail. And if you lose sight of that, then you become very focused on that year.
That's a good point, too.
So, so, so that's why I, I come back and I, I, I would really recommend you, you consider, you know, you, 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 you need to have a strategy for, because you're saying, I'm going to need a substation at a certain time. I need to do something about this whole location. That's strategy. That is strategy. And so I, it's, it's not a procedure in my mind.
We're, we're not, oh, yeah, and, and again, uh, uh, you're, you know, you're talking to the guy that loves strategy, right? Almost as much as power supply. So, and, and I say that with a smile, but I mean, the reason, if you look at all of our, our mission statements and everything, everything that precedes everything, there's, we repeat that strategy over and over again in terms of in territory generation, you know, how do you manage people, transmission costs? How do you look at long-term power supply? All those factors come into it. So I think what we're, we're not, we are in complete agreement of the critical importance of strategy. We're really talking about here as the mechanism to make sure that we do that.
There's, there's also a third bucket here, when, when there's things that involve what the board does or should know about. We should have a committee, then whoever's the next chair to have the board looking at anything and maybe suggesting things, not just waiting for, not just waiting for you to bring back what you think, although we want that too. Like I noticed at the end, you have, you want to just delete the number twenty five, which does set up a way for us to be notified if there's allegations of which it's, it's probably deleted. I think it should be a committee of board, the board that would do that. That would look at anything that has to do with board actions or for what the board gets notified of or the board responsibilities.
One general thing is, um, and Susan is great at this. I'll give her all the credit in the world. Whether you call it a policy or procedure, it's all about structure. And having, call it what you want, as long as you have them, you have structure. And I think she brought that to the town of Wilmington, she brought that to R M L D, uh, or tried to bring it to the town of Wilmington, but she brought it to and um, and so you can call it what you want, but as long as there's an oversight of the board of commissioners, the general manager, H R, then you have control and that's all it's really about. So, um, that's my two cents on.
Got it. Kelly?
This, this is just a discussion, right?
Hey, we're going to skip, so we, uh, we, as we talked about before, we're not going to we'll do the green, the, uh, the green community stuff, the email, and then we'll, we'll um, do a formal presentation and on March twenty sixth. Or the next March meeting. So we'll jump to the general manager update.
Sure.
I know it's getting late, so we'll just hit a couple of key points here. Um. So we're, uh, we're nearly finished filling out the team. Um, we hired a control operator. As you guys remember, the control operator is the, um, we have a team of five. Our control was covered twenty four seven. It's always staff. Um, uh, it does, as we've talked about many times before, um, the staffing of that does impact overtime um, to a significant degree. Um, so the good news is we've hired a control, so we're fully staffed. There's a six month training process um, to that. We also hired a system engineer to add to the engineering team, which is a great addition. Thank you. The, uh, and we, uh, as we talked about, uh, if you guys have, uh, reinforced and we are in complete agreement uh, the importance of communications. Um, so, uh, we are posting and the process of posting a, a marketing communications coordinator to be part of our marketing team. And then we're also posting in the I R D, Ray, and, and uh, uh, energy program specialist. We used to call it an analyst one, but um, anyways, you know, part of the teams, uh, Megan and Susan and the rest of the group, and how do you make it more relevant and interesting? So it's an energy program specialist. Um, you guys, uh, uh, back on the twenty seventh of January, we're asking about some of the legislative and regulatory and community engagement type stuff. Um, and what the results are, we are specifically talking about some key projects and funding. It's a follow-up to the December fifth meeting we had. One of the senators wasn't able to make it. It's going to be in next week. Um, in terms of, uh, of awareness. Um, Megan had discussed a while back, our, uh, some modifications or some additional options we're trying to make to our heat pump program. And this is a no interest loan. It would be in lieu of a cash rebate. Um, but we're doing that with a ready call up bank, so trying to work with local businesses, which is good. So, uh, on March twelfth, we'll have a ribbon cutting. We'll make sure you guys are aware of it as well. It'll be late afternoon. Um, and then as a follow-up to, um, the December fifth meeting that we had here, um, at River Park, uh, which is an industrial park in the middle of our territory. Um, that's where the first um, set of the additional battery systems are going in place. There's two five megawatt battery systems. Those are nearly commissioned right now. They'll be fully commissioned, uh, in March. Um, and we're going to do a ribbon cutting, just kind of a, a nice big program. Um, key audience are both legislative and regulatory, um, in particular, because as we go into the next phase, which is the longer term ones, we will we're looking for them to provide additional cash, capital, um, and uh, regulatory flexit related to make those programs work as well. So there's a lot of stuff happening on, uh, community and regulatory stuff. Um, uh, you guys, um, are aware and we're in the process, uh, you guys are in the process of sending up your emails. Um, I T is available for those of you that are still, uh, looking to do your setup. Um, our goal, just to kind of a heads up, is to fully transition the communication to be off of personal, off of personal emails and into the R M L D email by the end of March. So after our last board meeting, so the, it's a, you know, please get to it, um, but just big picture.
So let me ask you a question on that, Greg. I am not going to set up my email. Is that going to hold up the rest of the board?
Um, I don't think so, Ray.
It's no sense for me to set it up.
I don't think so, only because, um, I understand, um, if depending upon, uh, we'll, we'll look at the calendar and the transition associated with that, only because I think next month is, might be your last meeting?
Yep, next month will be my last meeting.
Okay, well, in that case, then, uh, we kind of designed the thirty first to work around you. I've already commented.
We'll be leaving together, Phil. After thirty eight years, my next month will be my last. I was chasing him, but I only got to the ten. Yeah, so.
Um, as we talked earlier about power supply, and so these are just some of the interesting elements we talk, we there's there's some interesting data here. The real message behind this slide is that. That power supply. Um, it remains a high priority. We're doing risk management. Um, and as as Megan mentioned earlier, it's a very dynamic market, and Bob, you you kind of brought it up, right? Natural gas is going through all sorts, right now it's high, but anyways, there's a lot of dynamic nature of it. Uh, Pam, you mentioned, right, higher bill, right? So as we talked about earlier, right, a monthly bill is driven by two factors. Usage in terms of kilowatt hours for residential, there's demand piece for. For some of the CNI accounts, but usage and then what the rates are. And so January twenty fifth was cold, that coldness continued into February. Um, just to give you, it doesn't look like a big difference, but the recent ten year average was thirty one point five six. Um, and and uh January average was twenty nine point five five, you know, two degrees. Was that really a big difference? Well, it did have a big impact. It basically drove not only um. Uh, our load, but regional loads up about eight percent in January, so pretty significant, and was driven primarily, well, it was driven by weather specifically.
Eight percent versus.
Versus versus what we budgeted, back to back to the budgeted piece, forecast.
Oh, I was reading where it says eight percent above January.
Oh, I'm sorry, eight percent by January twenty four, twenty four, yes, yeah. Budget versus, yes. Um, so that's on the load side, and Ray, you mentioned this at the last couple of meetings, right, that we're balancing load, dynamic load. And then dynamic supply. So this is exactly a point in the month of January. Where it was a windy month, but it was also a cold month. Um, and there's a couple of other factors driving it, but hydro was down um below forecast and wind was up. And so and you know, there's a whole bunch of implications in terms of the mix between those two and the timing between those two and the reasons between those two. The point being is that, again, it's something we need to actively manage, especially when they have renewable resources which are inherently intermittent.
Well, there's a lot of hydro in my yard right now, which will probably get into the groundwater and into your.
Looking forward to that.
So so I'm more, you know, I'm my question. With that is. As we look to the spring where we will see hydro starting to come up, but we'll also see demand come down.
Yep.
How how are we? How are we managing that? That side of the demand supply?
Well, so so um in both of those, you know, we looked, as we talked about before, right, we will probably be in a situation where we have more supply than load. In the month of April and possibly May, not March. Um, and and then we look at, you know, what's the implication of, there's a bunch of factors. Net net from a a net dollar perspective, we're still ahead of the game as we look at them overall year. Um, the other element here, just so this is part of the reason why we looked at um in this very volatile market, you know. Historically, we used to be when the market was very stable, we used to be at sixty percent hedge. Um, obviously, over the past several years, we've moved to roughly ninety percent hedge. This is a good example where. Um, in late December, the Ford price curve was about a hundred, the forecast for January, again, the following month was a hundred and five dollars a megawatt hour. That ATC is around the clock. Um, there's on peak economics, but just. The detail, the the big message is. When we actually got into January, it got colder than planned, and then the ATC or the the open market price was a hundred and thirty five dollars a megawatt hour. Right? And those numbers are, uh, you know, our average contracted is less than half of that. So as those prices evolve, get higher and higher. Our our customers' um bills are dampened with that kind of impact and. And if you look at the website, you can see we didn't have a lot of pipe push, you know, while costs were higher, we dampened the high cost. Anyways, the key point is that um our hedging position was benefit, the customer significantly benefited. If we are a much more open market. The uh your six, whatever, your 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 several hundred dollar bill would be significantly higher than that. So anyways. I gave you this just to give you just a little bit of snapshot in terms of the dynamic nature. We'll do a more detailed power supply in the next several months. But um this is just, again, reinforcing why managing power supply is so important.
So Greg, one quick thing, because I never even thought about, like, I always knew whether perfected. Um, wind and solar, but I never really thought about hydro, so is it because every the rivers freeze and they. And they can't run spring enough. I never even thought about that.
No, but but. Exactly, so it gets really cold and it.
And droughts, I guess, but.
Well, you get droughts as well, but hydro has its, you know. Everyone has a capability.
Yeah.
But but the other, well, but the freezing temperature also affects the ability of them to to pump out during January, um, potentially, and this year was particularly cold. The other thing that we haven't talked about lately, but several years back, if some of you remember. We were looking specifically at different hydro contracts to making sure they weren't all on the same um watershed area. They weren't on the same river, right? And so we've we've geographically tried to spread those around as well. So there's a bunch of, when we talk about risk management. And we've we've done, we did a lot of discussion on that last fall and we'll do it again. Um, but there's a lot of factors that go into how you manage. Um, the risk associated with contracts. We have roughly thirty contracts. Yeah, um, which is a lot. But part of it is risk management. Any final questions? Dave, back to you.
All right, well, we had uh. This was. A discussion, it was significant emails from from you last night to the whole board. That um. That also forwarded an email from Chris Pollard that gets sent to me. So we we took a vote on February twelfth about. Three areas of. Performance that we felt were less than satisfactory, that that occurred. And um and and Chris's email, and then you echoed it, said that. This meant. It was it was leads to discipline, but the comp contract doesn't say anything about that, or that it went, meant it was a pip, and. Again, the contract doesn't say, all all your contract says is. We shall provide a list and write period at the story. So I we I we all read the emails.
Great, why don't you all read the memo?
We did. And then. I I just want to point out also that Chris, Chris's note didn't mention that I'd had two conversations with him about, well, how how do we do that and included you on one? So it was an effort to try to say, well, what is our process for doing that? If we wanted to do something in writing, how would we do it? And so that was why I reached out to them and we actually had a productive call, maybe to do a live edit on a Zoom meeting. So at this point, it's really just like what? How do we turn? What we talked about into that, what could be a brief written list? I gave you a two hundred word version, so, you know, so everybody has. Oh, they do, okay, so. Okay.
You guys discuss, this is all you now.
How do we, sure, so I mean, how or what do we do? Right?
Oh, no, let me start. Seniority has its privilege. I bow to the. The youngest powers to the uh.
I I respect, I respect you more than you think I do.
First, I I thank Chris for the memo. Uh, because it made clear. At our discussion, we really didn't know, we we had not been able to review with the particular section four point five, so this memo kind of. You know, allowed me to review what four point five says. Um, as I understand it here. If we move, we adopt what you wanted to adopt, that kind of. Starts a clock running for six months. In potential disciplinary action. Um, you know. I'm not gonna be around in six months, but you know, if the improvements don't come back, the board could. Could terminate the general manager in the next months. If I have that wrong, you gotta.
Well, it's just not, it's just not stated in the contract in any way.
The other thing that's going on is, I'm sure. I don't know how much you're aware, but there are union negotiations going on right now. And it would be very bad thing to weaken the general manager in union negotiations. You know, he has presented two items here. Two uh two pathways. Um, in terms of what I got, let me just find it where I got it here. You know, in terms of we can either rescind the two motions. Or we can just say that the uh the the uh January twenty seventh. Is the is the review. We covered all those items, and you know, those seem pretty. Straightforward to me that, you know, those set the items that you should be aware of. And should be addressed going forward. So I think that, you know, in terms of what I have, it's it's the second pathway. In terms of the motion there. That we uh that we moved that the board, the board approved the January twenty seventh to is open session minutes. And those services are in two thousand twenty four written performance review.
Well, I think we, I think we have a different meeting that we're talking about. Maybe we're gonna say something.
Well, yeah, I. We've been in this process now for several months. So so the idea of a clock or something starting, I think we've talked about. Areas of improvement and how to do it, and we've. Talked about solutions, they're in your goals for next year.
Yeah.
So so I don't see a sixty day or six month clock kicking in. I think they're incorporated in those goals. And and just, we've we've got the team, we've addressed some of the issues. You know, I don't, I don't see that being the driver. As a board, we only have so much power. And and one of the few powers we have is good feedback to the general manager.
Agreed.
And I do not see. It being. A. Failure to give the general manager strong feedback. It would send a message that the general manager gives weak feedback to the people that they're reporting to. So if we give strong feedback to the general manager. And the general manager says to whoever they're negotiating with. This is important. I've been hit on this. We've got to manage these costs because the board has established that this is important. Then you're gonna have to relay that message down the chain. I don't think that that weakens any negotiating position. I think it strengthens it. In terms of energy, staff. And communications, which are the three basic categories. So if the board says to you that these are the three categories that are really, really important, that. We didn't do well in twenty twenty four, they're on my goals for twenty twenty five. I fail to understand how that weakens the negotiating position. I think it strengthens it, because those are then the messages you have to relay down downstream that. This is what the board has has put priority on. So. The negatives that have been presented to me, I I don't, I don't see them as being limiting. And I would rather see a. The board. Accept its responsibility as giving the manager feedback. Supporting the manager in achieving that. Goal and objective going forward. But not. Fail to give strong feedback. So I would say. It's been a process, Greg. We've been been through a number of things a number of times. We we spent some extra time on the twelfth of of February to to kind of go over this. Let's, let's take the. Minutes of the February twenty, February twelfth as our final feedback. And the performance. Reflect goals or outcomes are those things that are reflected in your goals and. Um, as as the outcomes, I don't, I don't.
Is there anything actually be taken away from the January twenty seventh?
Well, I I think it both, really. I mean, I think both. It was, it's been a process. You. You had the twenty seventh. You digested it, you you gave us a sheet back. And and then we digested that and said, well, I think the way I see it is. This didn't include that, and this didn't include that, and we still want more in in these things, and. And there were some edits that came out of of that. To me, to me, it's collective, uh, as far as written feedback. I would, I would propose we just take the minutes of the. Um, February twelfth as the written feedback. It could be both, but collectively, yes.
But we did, on the twelfth, we specifically had ones of. Of less than.
Yeah, it has to be inclusive of the of the twelve, for sure, but they can include the twenty seven.
Are you making a motion?
Uh, if, yes, I can put forward a motion if that.
Please.
Yeah, so just in that, in terms of Greg suggesting, you got. You got the suggested move for number two there in front of you?
I I I have one, but it's consistent with.
Just add the February twelfth minutes to that.
Why don't you read your, whatever you have, Greg? We had a meeting on the twelfth, specifically about. Three areas, and the question has been, what do we do with that meeting?
Yeah, 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 let me just know.
Yeah, just just add on plan.
I I have some suggestive language, and I'm I'm reading what is put here, and you're, I get what you're saying, Phil, I'm not. This one he wants to add, we want to add.
You can take Dave's memo if you want to take it out.
The second.
Well, those aren't the only two. I mean, those are things that Greg put forward, but we can also make our own motions.
All right, 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 I understand, I understand, I'm just. Taking pieces of input here and and want to uh. All right. Uh, both are quite similar, so. There's option A, which is what I. Taking as a base. And move that the Redding Municipal Light Board of Commissioners approve. The summary written list of areas of GM performance that were less than satisfactory based on the. January. Twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, and February twelfth, twenty five. Regular session, meeting minutes as approved by the Board of Commissioners.
So could you say that again?
Say that again? All right. Move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve the summary written list of. GM performance that were less than satisfactory. Based on the. January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, and February twelfth, twenty twenty five, regular session, meeting minutes. As approved by the. Board of Commissioners. Because there's gonna be. Well, they don't exist, yeah.
Sir, any second on that?
So I'm not sure what you're actually.
Well, well, can we have, he made a motion. Do we have a second?
But I'm sorry, I didn't really fully under.
I don't fully understand the motion.
Let's hear the motion and.
Second until I get to understand the motion.
Right. So. What if, what the? But the motion intent is that we are approving. The. Areas of GN performance. Be based on the meeting minutes from the January. Twenty seventh and February twenty twenty fifth.
February twelfth.
February twelfth um. Meeting minutes. So we're not writing something up, we're referencing those meetings as the basis of.
I heard you say before that to summarize the written list of areas. That were less than satisfactory when you said it. Well, I mean, it's what he said.
Well, yeah, I I was going off.
Please.
Yeah.
I mean, it's what he said the first time.
So so Ray, you're probably better off if you do, you know, you can do whatever you want, but uh. If you take some motion number two there. And just add in the February twelfth, two thousand twenty five. To the January twenty seventh, you you, I think.
Would you like that language better?
I think you've accomplished what what you're trying to do.
All right. We'll try again.
You want me to read?
We don't have to do a written, we don't have to do a written, we already had a big, long meeting with sixty comments. The only thing that written list would be if there was things that were less than. That's the only thing that the contract said we would do a written list on. So either we do that or we do nothing.
Now, this is, this is fine. I'm I'm agreeing with Phil. Let's let's go, let's. Starting from scratch. Hi, I'm Ray Porter. Move that the Redding Municipal Light Board of Commissioners approve that the January twenty seven, twenty twenty five. And February twelfth, twenty five, open session, meeting minutes. Serve as the general manager's twenty twenty four written performance review. I think that's, I think that's, I think that's right, yeah, I think that's.
I'll second that.
Yeah, so those, okay, meeting minutes serve as the written performance review, that's.
So we're not doing a list even?
With in embedded that or list, embedded in those meeting minutes are definitely three things that.
Okay.
That talk and discussed and voted on, actually, so.
Well, yeah, that's the thing we.
So the meeting minutes would have. Specific. Voted on.
Okay.
Language.
Right, did we move and second it?
Yeah, I second it.
Okay, we're ready. Is that, we're ready for vote on that? Any other comments? Okay.
All right.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pain processes here, and I think it's 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 a process, Greg, we all get feedback. You know, constructive feedback, right? And we and we come back, we we all do things, we get things we can improve on. I think that's that's the point, right?
Yeah.
We're we're.
And and I think, just to be clear, I'm more than welcome to. Constructive feedback.
So.
I'm reacting to the.
One of the things, one of the things I would suggest.
August twenty second.
Yeah, when Dave Fantasy was a board member. He and both Tom or or were were actually personnel people. They created some sort of system. I don't know if we could. Dig up that system. Somewhere. Because he talked about something doing on a road, on a regular basis. Once a year. Mr. Chair, one last thing?
Yeah.
Um, at the next meeting, I request some time at the beginning of the meeting.
I will give you more than time. I'm gonna throw the gavel your way, my friend, so.
Because I just, I worked on the chronology of.
No, no, you're you're gonna be, you're gonna be the master ceremony. I just want to do one piece of housekeeping on what we just did. And I'd just like to move that. Move that the. That the. That the document that's to be produced by the previous motion shall include within it. The list of the three items that were deemed less than satisfactory on the February twenty fourth meeting. The list of the three items that were deemed less than satisfactory on the February twenty fourth meeting. Just to be clear that it includes that. That's my motion. Move that the, that the. Performance review that results from the foregoing motion from January twenty seventh and February twelfth. Shall include the three items. That the board voted as being less than satisfactory. We voted on it. So is there a second on that motion?
More than.
No.
Is there a second on the motion that it will include the, the three? So it's not going to include the three, so we're erasing that?
I'm not seconding the motion because by definition. Those meeting minutes.
Okay.
Talked about three items. Vote on the three items, they'll include it. I don't, I don't see. A new second or, or vote on it.
All right.
It's inclusive by definition.
All right, then, okay, so no, no second and no vote on that. It's, it's understanding. It's a, is it an understanding that it does? I'm just making sure. Cause I'm, I don't know how it's gonna. Before we adjourn, I'd just like to, 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 for this purpose of this complicated minutes approval. I think we need a couple of.
I'm on the clock.
Can we have?
That's right.
I'm on the. With great respect for your service, maybe could one of you serve as, or both, or two people serve as board secretary other than me. To go through this two thing and go through whatever this, or, or we just leave. It feels like a lot to hand to Eric to do.
Oh, no, we'll do the same process.
I certainly will be objective in, in.
It's not about you. It's just, I was thinking.
You know, I'd be more than happy to share it with either Pam or, or maybe I'll share it with Ray the minutes.
All right.
I think that may be the appropriate thing.
Yeah, just having two people.
Minutes with Ray.
Have two people who put their heads.
Those, those two, though, because we already proved with January's twenty seventh minutes.
Yeah.
The February's twelfth minutes, I'll share, we can share with.
Just for clarity.
Yeah, just for clarity. So I, did I hear it correctly? Um, cause contractually, I'm now on the clock. Are you saying I'm not on the clock?
I'm saying there's a single sentence in.
Are you just yes or no? Am I on a clock or no?
Um, well, it's not clear what we just voted for.
So the rest of you guys need to decide because it has. This, this discussion tonight has huge implications. You just need to make sure you're, I'm hearing very clearly.
Right.
I have the feedback.
Sure.
You have the feedback.
Contractual, so yes or no?
Well, that's why I think i- if, if we didn't vote on it.
That's a, this different discussion point, right? You're asking us something now, let's, you're making us make a legal decision without, we don't have counsel. You would counsel, look at that. This is where it all goes through all the time. You would counsel, look at that and advise on what we were asking for. Chris Paul writes. A, 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 a large email and, and we would take it something. That this all started because it was, it's, we did not notice. That again, it's, it's, we. Like, we, it says it in the contract, right? Okay, but trying to follow that's, that's your contract. You gave it to us.
Yep.
Okay, you get Chris Paul to write this massive email back again. Telling us, we have to.
Sorry, Chris is on the call and he doesn't.
He's, he's on the call?
Yeah.
But, but again, that, it comes back to us, right? And that was just, it, again, we're making simple things. Complicated.
Agreed, we don't.
Okay, but you, now you're asking us to make a statement about that. We have nothing, I have no knowledge of. You can't tell me to say yes or no. And I don't know what that means to me or what that decision process is, right? So. So I, I want to, I want to back up there and just say, all we're trying to do is just do a review. And, and. Follow a process that we said, okay, Greg, we said some things that you can approve on. Your contract says, we have to give you that right. It said it in black and white. Now Chris comes back and says, oh, no, it doesn't. It says it right there. That's all we followed. Now we go, now you're asking to say yes or no. I didn't, nothing that we said, which you want to talk. Not that, not that I said, anybody here said that.
Okay, I said the opposite, that we've incorporated into your goals, into the things of moving forward. That things are already in place for managing many of these issues. And I, I don't see any clocks here. I, 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 I think we've addressed the issues. We've defined the issues, we've, the meeting minutes have been writing. I, I really don't even know why we're having this conversation.
I, I, all it is, and we, we need to come up because every time we, we think we're taking a step forward, we're taking a step back. Because. Again, language and lawyers and everything gets involved, right? We're just going through a simple. A, a process where we're trying to get something done. I think we did it. I, we, we attempted to satisfy Chris's letter. Right? And again, I'll let Chris speak now, I think too much, but I think that was the whole point of what Ray just did, so.
Yeah, hi, um, good evening commissioners. Um, I just wanted to point out, there's, there's no magic to giving the, um. General manager feedback. Um, you can do it informally, you can do it, um, verbally, you can do it in writing. Um, you can do it however you think is most appropriate, um, in the circumstances. The significance of the language in section four point five. Is when you've deemed basically the general performance of a manager to be less than satisfactory. And you need something to happen about in a six month period. And if that six month, and if it doesn't happen within that six month period. Then you're going to be taking some sort of action. So if that's, and what I'm hearing from the board is that's not the intent. So because of the contract, just because the contract doesn't contain language that prohibits you. Um, from providing comments in writing. Doesn't mean that you can't provide comments in writing without triggering section four point five. That's, so I, I think that's the point that I wanted to communicate. There seems to be a, a misunderstanding. That if the board wants to provide written feedback, that it has to trigger section four point five of the contract. That's not true.
But, but, but the thing is, Chris, section four point five has a single sentence that says we want, we shall provide in the list in writing of what those are. It doesn't say that that therefore means. If it, something doesn't happen in six months, X happens after that. It's completely silent on. On anything that you've said in your email, that means he's, uh, subject to discipline. There's absolutely nothing in the contract. About discipline, it's, or that it's putting on a, on a, on a PIP. The contract says nothing about. Us being able to put the general manager on a PIP. So that's just something in your email.
That's just how that works in, in the labor and employment context.
That, I think your firm reviewed the contract before, you know, back, I mean, it was, I think it was your colleague. And, and you're saying it says something that it's not said in the contract.
Not sure there's any disagreement, Dave. I, I think that, I think the board wants to provide written feedback. All, my only point is you can provide written feedback without triggering section four point five. There's no need to reference section four point five unless you've got a, a six month performance metric in mind. Which, hearing from the commissioners, you don't have that in mind.
Well, all it says is actions which we believe he could take to improve things in a six month period, period. And then it's, it stops that. It doesn't say anything after that.
Meeting minutes of January, February twelfth do not mention specifically four point five. I think we. Do mention the three areas of. Written feedback. Which now is in the form of those meeting minutes. And why can't we stop talking about this?
Right, yes. Mr. Chairman, can we hear?
I mean, sure.
I'm moving, well, I, C A B should return first.
Oh, schedule, wait for.
Schedule.
Yeah.
You March the twenty sixth.
Can we do, um? Can we potentially look at April?
Well, you can look at April for me all you want. As of April eighth, I'm gone. I'm surprised that the, uh, the new gentleman who's running has not come to this meeting. I'm a little surprised a little bit.
Ap- April twenty third, which is a, so Wednesday, so I know we've kind of shifted in terms of dates. Third week of April starts the twenty first. Okay, let's not do that. Um, how about the week of the twenty eighth, which is? The twenty ninth or the thirtieth? Or May first?
Either of the last two weeks of April, um, I will have to phone in from France.
Ooh. Why don't we just all go with me there?
Do sixteen?
We did sixteen.
That works.
I'll probably be dead by the sixteenth.
That's Wednesday.
Sure.
In truthfulness, I probably will miss it. I probably miss, but, you know, the time has come. I, I cannot serve, you know, another, I would have to commit to another three year term. And I, I can't guarantee I'd be around for three years. Okay, I found a place in Wilmington that I love. So I may be moving there. So hey. You can be on the C A B. That's it. Name tag moves from there to here.
All right, did we decide on the sixteenth?
Six o'clock? Okay, that work?
Yeah.
Bob, does six work or do you want to try to go a little later? I just feel like, um.
No, six, six is fine. I, I, I'm okay with that. I probably just had.
Do you want to go for mail soon?
Yeah. Uh, pardon me?
No, I, I talked to the week of May nineteenth.
Could I just ask a quick question? Just in the interest of not ever having to discuss this again or think about it again. I'd just like to say if. If these minutes are produced and there is reference to that section. If we don't say what we mean, then we're going to be asking again what we mean. Um, I, I, I took away a reference to that section from Dave. And I think assuming that it isn't in there. Could be troublesome because if it is, we're going to be looking back at you and saying, that's not what you intended. Could you indicate it tonight? It's not what you intended, so I. As the H R person, I just want clarity on, is that what you intended?
So.
Uh, I can clarify something. Sorry, just, I will clarify that. The motion was pursuant to section four point five. According to the transcript. So that stuff, that was.
And I, and I do think that means what to me that meant, and you all know that. What? Chris felt it meant to, to me in my bearing.
Well, the, and, and again, that's.
Okay.
That's what Chris felt like it meant. I think it's. I think it clearly, clearly intense. Here. Right? Um, now we're getting into the, one of our legal issues versus. Non-legal issues that, uh, again, that, that we. Get our circular paths, right? We, we, we get these vortexes.
Yeah, it's true.
Get out of it, right? And, and I just think, we, we have it. We have intent, we're trying to. Provide some written feedback. They state that in there, but I, I think, Greg, here's our intent, right?
I do. And, and I think to answer you specifically, Susan, um. You know, because there's no second sentence after that sentence in this contract, okay? Uh, first of all, we, I don't know that we've come out of this with a process for producing the list with the actions. We, I don't think that happened tonight. I could have, but it didn't. So, okay, but something's going to happen now, some mishmash of minutes. I don't know what it's going to look like. And then even if there is in there a, a list and actions. Um, the contract doesn't say, of course, you know, what happens in month seven if. We don't think something happened by month six, it says nothing about it.
That may be precisely why we don't use it and we just give the feedback because I do think, I do think it says very clearly. Six months.
You're right.
And that's putting, it, it is putting him on a clock and, and we just want to be really clear. That we know he's on a clock, if he's on a clock.
Right, but I mean, it, it doesn't say anything about. Whether it matters if it's seven months or doesn't happen. It just said, this is things we'd like you to do in six months. It said, and then it's, it's, it's silent. Which would be nice if it wasn't. Right?
Well, I think one of the things that we, that we asked, asked right. To do, part of it was to provide the board feedback. Right, over the course, over the course of, of the next couple of evenings, and that's one of, that's one of the.
It's also why, let me just get this out. Okay, it's also why I saw two meetings with Chris. To say, okay, we took this vote, how do we render the vote into? A proper list that we then all agree on, which could include significant feedback from Greg. About what the list is and what the actions are. And that's the conversation I had with Chris and Greg a week and a day ago. And now, but something different happened where the proposal was, oh, just substitute January twenty seventh minutes. As if February twelfth didn't even happen. And then a big memo about how we can't do this and we should rescind. If we had just had the Zoom meeting to go through and finish this three hundred word memo. And agree on it, we wouldn't be here right now, but that didn't happen. But I'd still be open to having that thirty minute Zoom meeting to hammer out.
We'll do it again.
Well, I mean, we could have done it tonight. We could have done it Monday, like you said last week, and we didn't.
So, just to be real clear.
Yeah.
I will, I will state very emphatically, I am dedicated to this organization. Listen to me very carefully, all right? I took the feedback. I've been working on the feedback. I've been working on this stuff for six months. We talked, and so when we've made a lot of progress on several, on several elements. Um, I will continue to serve at the pleasure of the board as long as the board wants me to be here. I, so that, that is my commitment to the organization, to you. But also to the organization, because at the end of the day, my responsibility is to follow under your direction. But I am serving the community and I'm, and I am doing the best of my ability to take care of our employees. That is my commitment until my last day here. You guys get to decide when that is. That's all just, that, that needs to be very clear. You heard this earlier, how I interacted with Mr. Charlie, right? That's how I run the business, all right? You understand how I manage the financials? Our financials are excellent, all right? It's a team effort. Is our team perfect? No. But I, anyways, all said and done, um, till you guys say, no, thanks, um, I will do my best. That's, and that's period. So. Let, again. I'll, I'll, I'll stop there. I'll just stop there. I, I, I think things will be a little bit different, um, going forward. Should be great. Okay. May. Go to May twenty sixth, twenty seventh, twenty eighth? You guys want to try and make a cut of that? You guys know your schedules well enough?
Sounds fine to me.
Yeah.
Twenty eighth is a Wednesday?
May. Yeah, or twenty first or.
No, I'm good then.
Oh, okay.
Twenty eight is after Memorial Day.
Actually.
That may matter.
Is it, the Memorial Day twenty eighth?
Twenty six.
Oh, twenty six, you're right.
May twenty seventh is better than twenty, twenty eighth and stuff for me.
That's fine, actually.
Twenty seventh or twenty ninth, yeah.
Either one's okay for me. Have, anybody have any preferences? If Vex has only got the limitation, we'll do it on the. Twenty ninth, okay, there you go. Twenty ninth? Six o'clock? Good? Not a word to you.
I got it. Um, I'd like to say something before tonight's over. As this, I ask you. Um, thank you to everyone on the Board of Commissioners, the C A B, every employee here.
Yes.
Been a great one. And, you know, it's, I've learned a lot about power. Tricity that I never even knew I needed to learn, but, uh, thank you for everything. It's been fantastic.
You've been awesome.
Next month, you didn't make the thought of next month. You did April. October twenty sixth, I have, um, two meetings.
Sorry.
Yeah, as, as of right now, March twenty sixth, I have two meetings. Um, we'll see if, what time do they finish? First one starts at six thirty.
We start at five thirty?
I could use one right now.
We, we allow us the opportunity to say.
I'll try to see what I can do to, um, that.
Six to six ten.
But I just wanted to make sure I said it tonight, just in case.
We thank you.
If I can, when we get closer, I'll take a look. Now, again, it's been. At least ten, if not eleven years, so it's been good.
Thanks for all your feedback.
Oh, I, I. Breaking in your procurement knowledge and understanding how. Municipality runs and they get practice, all this stuff, like tonight, your point about one percent electrification. And just to, to charge, what the implication of that, that just. I, I never thought that the T O U on that would be unbelievable, right? Because you're, you're just talking about penalty. Right? And, and, and there's nothing you can do. It's a municipal building. They're all like that. Kind of eye opening statement, but that, that's all we're going to miss.
Appreciate it. Who knows, I come back as a. Surprise guest sometime. You, Dennis, you, you've brought a lot to the table. So I, I thank you for my, for my standpoint.
Okay, I learned a lot from you, man.
I appreciate, thank you, Brad. I appreciate that. You going to miss it when you're gone? I will. I actually, this was a hard one to leave. Cause I do enjoy. Yeah. I, there's some great banter and things. I know exactly what you're talking about. But, um. You know, it was a hard one, but it was, I don't think it's fair to the community or the group if I can't show up for three months straight. And I'm looking at the next three months and going. Yeah, how do I fit this in? And then to my family, it's been Monday through Thursday. So I'm home nine o'clock, nine thirty at night.